...Commissioners, Courtesy Resolution Section of our program tonight. And first, it's an honor for us to present a resolution honoring Mr. Ed Westcott. We have with us Bill and Emily Westcott and Don Honeycutt. Resolution number 1904750, resolution honoring James Edward Ed Westcott. Whereas on March the 29th, 2019, our dear friend Ed Westcott passed away peacefully in Oak Ridge, leaving an unforgettable legacy of 97 years. And whereas, for those who knew him, he was a wonderful man filled with knowledge and love for citizens of Oak Ridge and all mankind. But Ed was best known for his award-winning photography, who documented life in Oak Ridge and the history of the Manhattan Project. And whereas, his historic photographs captured the lives of tens of thousands of atomic energy workers in the 59,000-acre reservation, surrounded by barbed wire and overwhelming military security force that closely guarded American's secret city. And whereas, Ed photographed not only the construction of the many plants that went by the secret code names of Y-12, K-25, and X-10, but the lives of the many workers at work and also off-duty, raising children, shopping, going to school, movies, and everything needed for raising a typical family outside the ever-present military force. And whereas, he was the only official photographer of the Manhattan Project and the only person allowed to take photos within the reservation, making his unforgettable photograph, chronicling the lives of the dedicated workers and their families' true historic treasures for our great nation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Legislative Body, meeting in regular session this 15th day of April 2019, that we honor the unforgettable life of our dear friend Ed Westcott. His photographs captured not only the Manhattan Project and the construction of the city of Oak Ridge, but the lives of all citizens who worked and lived and participated in these historic events that brought the end of the greatest war ever, but also brought about the age of the atomic energy. Ed Westcott will never be forgotten in history, for his thousands of photographs will remain an American treasure for eternity. Rest in peace, our dear friend Ed Westcott. Resolved, duly passed, and approved this 15th day of April 2019. I want you all three to say something. You have the mic. Picture and say something.
My name is Emily Westcott Honeycutt. I was Mr. Westcott's special prize daughter, the only daughter. I was right in the middle, two older brothers, two younger brothers. Dad started photography at a very, very young age. He was really interested around 13 and 14, and that's when he captured his first president, Roosevelt, who was traveling through Nashville. As time went on and the five of us children grew, there were darkrooms all over the house, in the bathroom, in the utility room, had a little shed out back, darkrooms everywhere. And we didn't really appreciate what was going on at the time, but as I became an adult and someone threw out the word "artist," I kind of stepped back and said, "You know, that's exactly what he is." Looking at his black-and-white photographs, how they're staged, the emotion that you can see in them, that is a true artist. And I had the pleasure of caring for my dad and our home the last two years of his life, and it was a wonderful time to spend with him, and I thank God for that gift. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm William Westcott, son number three, have one younger than me, and I'm a little bit younger than my sis here. I appreciate everyone and their appreciation for my dad, and thank you all very much. Thank you for this class.
Well, I'm Don Honeycutt. I'm the son-in-law and the adopted son by the Westcott family. I was fortunate enough to marry his lovely daughter Emily, and they took me in like another son and kind of looked after me, and I appreciate that and never will forget it. Ed never met a stranger. It didn't matter where he was or who it was, he always reached his hand out with a smile to shake their hand. One memorable trip, we went on the Honor Air Flight two years ago to DC. And I had attended a pre-ceremonial luncheon, I guess it was, to orientate myself of what I was supposed to do on that flight, and I knew what was going to happen when we returned to McGee Tyson Airport. So when we got off the plane, even in Washington, they was the veterans and everyone was greeted. When we got into Knoxville, and you come down that ramp, as soon as you turn down that ramp, there must have been a thousand people on each side of that ramp welcoming the veterans, and of course, Ed was one of the people. But going down the ramp, he was in a wheelchair, and I was trying to take pictures of my phone and hold the wheelchair, and I didn't get very many. But we stopped at every child on each side of that ramp. He wanted to reach his hand out to those kids. So that's one of the memories that I have, other than the fact of being part of his family and grew up with his photography, and like the proclamation said, his legacy live on through his photographs. I want to thank all the commissioners that had an input into this, Jerry Creasy and everyone else, and thank you again.
Next, I'd like to call on Commissioner Denenberg. She has a resolution honoring Alfred Williams.
I'm going to ask Chairman Wondell if he would please come and assist me, since I don't have a voice again tonight.
This is the same as this one?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Thank you, Commission, for allowing me to stand here and read this resolution in honor of a great American, great Clintonian. I'm honored to read this on behalf of the family and Commissioner Denenberg. It's not often we get to recognize two great Anderson Countyans as we are tonight, so I'm honored to do so. So, without further ado, let me read this resolution. Anderson County, Tennessee Board of Commissioners, Resolution Number 19-04-748. Resolution honoring civil rights pioneer Alfred Williams. Whereas, on March 14th, 2019, this county and our nation lost a brave and courageous civil rights pioneer who persevered to break down the barriers of public school discrimination for millions of Americans of color. And whereas, Alfred Williams was a quiet and caring person with a big heart, but his legacy in the history of our nation and school integration rings loud and will never be forgotten. Alfred was a member of the historic Clinton 12, who peacefully walked down from the Foley Hill community to open the doors of racial equality at Clinton High School in the entire United States. And whereas, after the landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education, a court order was entered by Federal District Court Judge Robert L. Taylor on August 26, 1956, for Clinton High School to allow all people of color to receive a free public education, thus paving the way for the Clinton 12. Despite many violent attempts by white supremacists to stop the historic efforts by the city of Clinton, including the September 1st, 1956 riot and explosive destruction of the school, the community, and the civic leaders remained steadfast in pushing forward, achieving the historic honor of being the first public school system in the South to be desegregated and achieve racial equality. Now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson County Commission, meeting in our regular session this 15th day of April 2019, that we honor the life of Alfred Williams for his trailblazing efforts to open the doors for all people of color to access public education. He was an iconic figure in our nation's civil rights history, and we are proud to be home to a man that etched his name in the history books for all to know, his bravery that impacted the lives of millions of Americans, to come and remind us every more that there's only one race in Anderson County, and that's the human race. That was pretty strong, wasn't it? Be it further resolved that we declare August 26, 2019, as Alfred Williams Day in Anderson County, in honor of this noble man who tore down the barriers to public education for all. Resolve, duly pass, and approve this 15th day, April 2019. Signed, Mayor Terry Frank, Chairman Tracy Wondell, and Jeff Cole. I'll let Commissioner Denenberg present this, because she was the one that put it on the agenda, and I want to thank the families.
The ones that don't know me, I'm Alfred Williams', only stepson. My name is Cornelia Ferguson, and that young man that passed away here a few weeks ago was the key to my heart. It was nothing that I couldn't ask for, but one thing he did, presented to me, was being in church, praising God, and loving. He loved my mother. He loved my daughter. This young lady right here was the key to his heart, just like she the key to mine's. It was nothing, it would not try to do to keep her happy. And my mother was the same way. It was no, it was two women that he really treasured, my mother and this young lady here, and he believed in God, and he didn't have no color barrier in him. He treated everyone the same. He carried that head up and praised God and presented to everyone that he greeted, that had, trusting God. And he carried that legacy with him until he death. And I'm proud to receive this. I'm proud that y'all honored him, to receive him for this day and give him this proclamation. It means a lot, and I hope it mean a lot to my daughter. And I'm pledging each one of you on this staff, right now, letting y'all know, this is Alfred Hart right here. Y'all see this young lady straying away and not reaching to her potential? Give her some encouragement. You know, we all need it, and I'm pledging everyone in this room right now, give this young lady some encouragement to keep pushing on, because the dream is there. Just all she had to do is seek it. It's there for you. Yes. Thank you all.
The first thing I always say to God, be the glory. I always say that, and most of the members sitting around this board know me very well. For the ones that don't know me, my name is Eddie Soles. I'm standing on the concrete that I helped hold, I'm right here. I helped hold this concrete when they started this building in 1964. I got locked in the jail back there, because the guy paid a crank on us. It was accidental, he paid a crank on us, and we finished the concrete, so I've been locked in this jail. And like I said, I know everybody. This young man, Alfred, my brother, good man, very good man. I thank God for him. He was 83, and I'm 79. Been with him. He loved his family. This is my oldest daughter, he loved her. He married Miss Ferguson, all her family, but he was a family to me. And I talk about Clinton everywhere I go. I am very thankful, very proud of this town. Look at Mr. Jameson, I look at McCamey, they all know me, who I am. I talk about Clinton and what happened. I was here, I had quit school. The only reason I, Maurice was my baby brother now, with my older brother, I was in between, okay? I did actually come down, but they wouldn't let me rest, okay? But I talk about what happened in this town, how good God was, and how good God is. Thank God for Alfred. Told my daughters, got five, got a boy, had a son, he passed on. Sometime, if God bless, I've been considering for about 10 years of writing a book on this town. There's two sides I'm going to talk about. One across the track there, one across the track here. That's two sides of this track. Me getting in concrete 50 some years ago, I've been on this side. Now I know, I already knew what happened on that side, I know what happened on this side, and I thank you all. God was so good that Alfred and the other 11 kids come back across that railroad track, no black eyes, no beat up, nothing of that. God. Saint Troopers came into town that night. It so happened, it was people lined up to do some damage as they crossed the railroad track. They set off full bombs in that community, nobody don't know that, I do, over there. They was going to come across the railroad track, but the people was ready to go with guns. I talk about it, this town, Mr. Jameson, McCamey, we, you all married at your father. Been a good town, still a good town. Thank y'all for honoring my brother. And I'm going to say this, I'm going to sit down. Friend of mine, was a personal friend of all, I call John Gammel. He told me 15 years ago, he said, "Eddie." I said, "What, John?" He said, "When you leave here, we're going to have to pass our tickets." And everybody do know me, and everybody know me as Eddie Soles, they know that, they know that. I've never stuck my chest out. But I've been who I am, what I am, and I love this town, I love the peoples in this town. You all been very good friends of mine, and I thank God, when those 12 kids cross railroad track, a kid nowadays can do anything they want to do. And I say, one more thing. I was so blessed to be here when they integrated school. I sit in school in 1948, and teacher looking at me in Alabama, she said, the kids, they go to school to get a good education, might be the President of the United States someday. Forty-eight, I was sitting in the back of the bus drinking colored water, and doing all that stuff. You could not make me believe that, but 2008, guess what happened? 1956, guess what happened? They crossed that railroad track. One more thing I'd love to see, and it's not Republican or Democrat, I just want a lady like her to be the President of the United States someday, so I can say I've seen the three. We're going to take the picture, I think, my daughter, you going to say something?
How many pictures y'all taking?
Okay, the next we have on the agenda is a proclamation program, and proclaiming May the 2019 is Mental Health Month, and also proclaim May the 3rd, 2019, is our Communities' Day to Elevate Mental Health Literacy by Celebrating Ride for Hope. Is there anyone here to speak on that resolution? Okay, if not, next we have our Anderson County Tourism Board, Stephanie Wales, Director, and Brent Galloway, representing the Tourism Board in Coal Creek, and they're going to tell us a little bit about their activities and what they've been doing for the economy of Anderson County. Stephanie and Brent, it's all yours.
I am going to let Brent speak first, but I do want to say that on the Tourism Board, I'm very fortunate to have a lot of great members, a lot of great support, and I mean, you heard one of the stories here that we promote in Anderson County, and it is very important that that history is preserved, and also that we have great recreational areas, which Coal Creek does a wonderful job to give us a world-class, great place for outdoor recreation. So I'm going to pass out a sheet for him and then let him speak.
Hi, my name is Brent Galloway. I'm the General Manager of the Coal Creek Company and the General Manager of Windrock Park. Commissioner Creasy has mentioned to me several months ago, asked that I come give a short presentation to Commission to talk a little bit about our business and what we do and what we are in the community. I think there is, historically, there has been some, maybe a little misconception, we're kind of the redheaded stepchild over on the north side of Oak Ridge, and so just asked for me to come and make a short presentation. The Coal Creek Company was founded in 1872. It is a publicly traded company, and it is Anderson County's oldest business, or at least, I've actually done some asking, and the most, the closest one next to that that I could find was Holly Gammel Funeral Home in 1923 and Hoskins Drug Store in 1930. So going back to 1872 is when we started. We are the largest landowner in Anderson County of our 73,000 acres, roughly 42,000 are in Anderson County. We have a number of business operations. For the first 100 years, we were basically just a coal company. That was all that mattered. Coal was king. There was some timber harvesting and that kind of stuff, but as coal has faded away, we focused more on other operations, such as we have a sustainable timber harvesting program, we have about 300-plus oil and gas wells, communication towers, we have a consulting forestry business. But the one that I was asked to come speak about tonight was Windrock Park. Windrock Park is our recreation business. It's the country's largest privately-owned off-road vehicle area. It operates on our property, it's within a, it's owned by the Coal Creek Company, but it operates under a subsidiary called Windrock Properties LLC. And in your paper that she's handing out, you can see some of the statistics that we have. We have, in 2018, we had 143,000 visitor days, and that is up from 123,000 in 2017 and 115,000 in 2016. So we bring a lot of people into Anderson County. Based on our permit sales, 51% of our permit sales are from Tennessee residents. Next state is Georgia with 12%, and then you can see down the list, North Carolina, Florida, et cetera. Generally, every year, we have customers come from almost all 50 states. It's a very small percentage if you look at west coast states, but I didn't bring that data with me, but people come from all over the country to our area to ride. To help facilitate that, we have a campground that has 30 cabins, 39 RV sites with full hookups. We can accommodate an additional 100 to 125 RVs with no hookups. We just built two new yurts, and we have about 100-plus primitive camping sites. Our cabins range anywhere from one-bedroom to four-bedroom. The four-bedroom is a duplex, and it sleeps up to 18 people. So groups come in, they will, a lot of people stay in Oak Ridge at hotels. If you drive through Oak Ridge on the weekends, you'll, most of the time on Friday and Saturday nights, you'll see trucks and trailers with
Thank you very much, by the way.
ATVs and side-by-sides and Jeeps and that kind of stuff. Of course, we want them to stay at the campground, but lots of business does stay in Oak Ridge. We do have, for those that don't have off-road vehicles, we have a fleet of 12 rental side-by-sides that you can rent by the day. we have a fleet of 12 rental side-by-sides that you can rent by the day. We have two-seaters, three-seaters, and four-seaters. Our campground in 2008 had 16,302 rental nights. That's up from 2017. We had 15,000, 16 was similar, and 15 was around 13,000. So you can see that our business is growing. We're putting a fair amount of marketing money into advertising. Some locally for events, but most of our advertising dollars are out of state. Markets such as Atlanta, Chattanooga, Huntsville, Nashville. I know that in, last year I believe, or year before last, we focused on some of the northern areas, like Cincinnati, and some other areas, trying to draw some customers to come down south. We have several large events every year. Some of them draw up to 5,000, 5,500. We have a couple of events in this coming year called the Shindig. We have country music. The Tenille Towns, Riley Green, and Justin Moore are playing in April. And we have another Shindigs in, on July 27th, and I can't tell you who's playing yet. So there are a lot of other businesses that are affected by us. The hotels have already been mentioned. There are four different campgrounds that are around us. Two of those are in Morgan County, the other two are in Anderson County. There are other rental cabins. There's Windrock Bed and Breakfast, there's Windrock Lodge. There's a few rental cabins in the New River area that are coming up now. And so, it affects all residents of Anderson County, helping the tax base. Any questions?
When do you find that it's your busiest time? Is it after a good rainstorm where they might be out mud bogging? Or are they climbing up on the hills when it's dry?
No, our busy times are seasonal. We used to say we were, we had specific busy times. We're busy year-round now, even in the winter. But certainly, spring and fall are our busiest times. This spring has been, even, this winter was one of the worst winters as far as weather has been concerned. But our spring, the last couple of months, have been our best numbers yet. And I think part of that is because so many people didn't ride in the winter, and it's now pretty, and so everybody wants to come. As it gets hot, say in August, business tapers off some. But as soon as it starts cooling back down, everybody starts riding again.
And I do want to say thank you very much for mentioning Oak Ridge. There's been a number of occasions that I've gone to Kroger's to do my grocery shopping, and half the parking lot is full of Jeeps. And I stop off, and I cry, and wave at everybody, and tell them how badly I miss my Jeep. Because I used to do something like that. I'd go on BLM trails out in California. But they're telling their friends about it, and they're encouraging them to come to Anderson County to see what we've got to offer. And it's awesome, and I thank you very, very much for it.
One of the common misconceptions is that it's just a bunch of rednecks out raising cane.
Correct. Those are expensive toys.
If you look at, if you come to the campground, and you look at the vehicles that are in the campground, and you have a $250,000 motorhome pulling a $60,000 enclosed trailer that has two $40,000 buggies in it, that's a lot of money. That's a whole lot more money than toys that I have. But there are some rougher individuals, but in general, they come, and they're coming on vacation. And just like most people, when they're on vacation, they spend more money. Whether it's in restaurants in Oak Ridge, whether it's in lodging, whether it's at Walmart, or Food City, or a Kroger, they're here, and they spend their money.
But I applaud you for bringing them out here.
Commissioner McCamey also has a question.
Okay.
Brent, is any of the cabins, are they all in the county of yours, or are they in the city of Oliver Springs?
It's a combination. Our original, our campground proper is, was annexed by the city of Oliver Springs. So the initial campground and cabins were there. The city of Oliver Springs had issues with sewer and water. Well, sewer really, not water. And so that kind of forced us, we wanted to continue building cabins. And so it kind of forced us out of the campground. And if you drive up Windrock Road now, there are eight or nine cabins on Windrock Road now.
Does the city impose hotel motel tax-
Yes.
On the-
Not the city.
Yes, they do. Yeah, yes. We pay, not we, the customers, and in, the ones in Anderson County that are on Windrock Road that are out of the city, the hotel motel tax goes just to Anderson County.
Right.
What is in the city of Oliver Springs, which is in our main campground, we, I think it is a total of 19% tax on cabin reservations there, which, there's an Anderson County hotel motel tax, and a city of Oliver Springs hotel motel tax.
Okay. We appreciate it.
Don't thank me, thank those that come here. It's their tax dollars.
Yeah. 16,000 nights.
And I'd like to remind everyone, Commissioner Isabel serves on the Tourism Board and is very active working with you, Brent, and Stephanie, and helping bring these people here to visit with us and spend their money. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Robert. Tim, would you like to say anything?
Yes. And I appreciate Brent coming and talking about that, because I know the ATV program to the city of Rocky Top has been a big boost to their economy. And Stephanie can probably tell you what the return on investment is for what actually the hotel motel tax goes into tourism brings into the county, Stephanie.
Well, and if you don't mind, I know we're running a little bit over, but you did ask me to speak about economic impact of tourism in Anderson County too. But is everybody done with their questions for Brent? Okay, thank you. Also, Robert, as he mentioned, he is also on our Tourism Board too. And we have representatives from each of the cities, from all three chambers, and then five representatives from the tourism industry. So we have really good representation, like I said, on our board. I passed out a handout, it may have gotten buried in some of your other stuff, but it looks like this, all the blue. Just to kind of give you some numbers to take with you. The state of Tennessee does a report for us every year, and it does run a couple of years behind. So we have 2016 data, which is what you see. And the big number there is 120 million economic impact. So in other words, visitors that come to Anderson County spend $120 million a year, or they did in 2016. And so the words there, transportation, entertainment, recreation, retail, food and beverage, accommodations. Those are the kind of things that tourists are spending money on. And that's what generates that 120 million dollars in economic impact. And that is up from 2016, I'm sorry, from 2006, by about 20%. So we've really grown a lot over the last 10 years. But the number that I really want you all to focus on is what comes back to the local economy. And that's through sales tax generated, other taxes generated, and that is $2.65 million. So I know, my years being involved in county government, that the general fund does not receive a whole lot of sales tax. But if you did, if you received that $2.65 million in sales tax, you would fund half of the Sheriff's Department, you would fund about 44% of the jail, or you would fund about 10% of the general fund. So that kind of gives you an idea of how much is generated for, from tourism to your budget. So I know a lot of that money goes to the schools, but if that money wasn't there, you all would be funding the schools, that $2.6 million. So the other number I want you to look on there is that if not for state and local taxes that come back, each household in Anderson County would pay an additional $347 in taxes. So I know that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but if you all raised property taxes, $300, $350, I know that each and one, every one of you all would receive a lot of phone calls. So that keeps money in our residents' pocket. And the good thing about that is that is people who come, and they visit, and they go home. They're not the ones calling you, wondering when you're gonna fix their potholes, or when you're gonna fund their schools. So those people go home, but leave their money here for us to use on education and infrastructure. Another number on there is 318%. So if you went to your, you know, Howard Edward Jones, or whoever investor, and said, "I would really like a good return on my investment", and he said, "I can give you 318%", I think we'd all pretty much jerk his arm off, right? Yeah. So you all are investing $375,000 in tourism in 2016, okay? And you received a 318% return on your investment. So, and I'm not, you know, I understand that there's a lot that goes into tourism in Anderson County. There's hotels that are built, there are investments from, you know, people like Coal Creek making a lot of investments. All of our museums making investments. There's a lot of people making that investment. But we are investing $315,000, or $375,000 to promote this county and bring those people here. And again, you're getting a 318% return on your investment. So that was the number that he was talking about. Just a little bit of information about our 2019 budget, kind of how it breaks down. That's what you see the pie chart there. And a couple of numbers I want to point out there is about 50%, I think it's about 58% of our budget, is direct and indirect marketing. So the majority of our budget goes back towards marketing this county. And then the little box over there is different ways that we're doing that. And we do a lot of these things in-house. I'm very proud of our staff that we're able to do a lot of these things in-house. Because if we had to hire an agency, we would be putting about 20% of that money in their pocket. So we're able to do that in-house and save the county a lot of money. So I think that's, if y'all have got any questions, that's all I have. But again, you know, I'm really fortunate to have a lot of partners, a lot of community businesses and organizations investing a lot of money in tourism in Anderson County, and I have a great product to sell. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing us to come and present this information to you. We really appreciate it.
We're very proud of the job you and Brent, and Tim, and Robert, and all are doing on your board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation portion of the meeting.
Does anybody need to take a break, or you want to get right into it? Who would like to do the pledge this evening? Pledge to the flag. Commissioner Scott, thank you. We have a commissioner that'd like to take a quick break. Would that be okay? Let's just do a, let's be back in here at, say, 6:42. What's that?
42 on the clock.
It's 6:42 real time. 6:00, hey, 6:50, you got eight minutes, let's make it happen. Thank y'all.
For too many decades, Tennessee has ranked in the bottom 10 among the least healthy states. But because thousands of people across the state are joining the movement to be more active, eat better, and reduce tobacco use, we are creating a healthier Tennessee. That movement has taken hold here in Anderson County, where a local committee has led a grassroots effort to achieve the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness, Healthier Tennessee Community Designation.
Active Anderson was lucky enough to receive funding from the Healthier Tennessee Communities Initiative. With the support of community programs, we are looking to increase healthy physical activity, better nutrition, including run clubs and competitive track events, gardening, tobacco education, and focusing on prevention of new smokers.
This movement doesn't end with a designation. In fact, it's only building. To get involved with the Active Anderson Committee, visit facebook.com/activeandersontn.
The presentations earlier, we went a little long, but that was all well worth it for every bit of it. Tourism, the two recognitions of great Anderson Countyans and the mayor, you did not, is the mayor in here yet?
Yeah, she's here.
Mayor, did you want to address the mental health resolution? We, you weren't in here, I mean, we don't have to do it right now, but...
I had it on there just to be approved.
Okay.
Sent later.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right, let's go ahead and get started. We'll call the Anderson County Board of Commissioners' regular agenda meeting to order Monday, April 15, 2019. If you go register, is everybody registered as present? Creasy, we got everybody who have two apps. Well, Meredith, he's...
Jerry's out there.
He's here, and Jerry is here. Technical difficulty. You're connected. We're just waiting on Commissioner White. I don't want to leave him out. Yeah, could you do that back there? One of the commissioners is going to reach, but I'd rather you do it. Put the pressure on you. Okay, we have all present. Thank you. Next, we'll have the prayer, which is going to be led by Dolores Cole, and then we'll have the pledge by Commissioner Scott. If y'all could rise. Dolores, please step up to the microphone. We thank you. Yes, ma'am, please. I wish we had the opportunity to let you sing as well, because you're phenomenal.
May we bow our heads in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we humbly bow this afternoon just to say thank you. Thank you for what you've done, Lord, what you're doing. Lord, would you bless this meeting and the procedures that are going on here this afternoon, that you get the glory and the people understand and go along, and everything be done in decency and order. We thank you for each and every commissioner. We thank you for the work in Anderson County, and we thank you for your love, God, in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Scott.
Please salute your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Next is Appearance of Citizens. If you have anything you'd like to cover, you can come up to the microphone. You have three minutes. Just state your name, your address. If it's any subject that's not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to approach the podium at this time. We've got an ESPN event going on over here. I apologize. Your name and your address.
My name's Denise Moren, my husband Mike Moren, and we live at 105 Walking Horse Trail in Arcadian Springs subdivision. And I guess you all may be familiar with some of the trouble we're having with our road, and I guess we're just kind of coming to get some insight on that. But I did write down a few things that I would like to say, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
In July of 2017, after being notified from various suppliers of bringing materials to build our home, they were unable to locate us due to no street sign. We reached out to Gary Long's office and was told we couldn't get a street sign because it wasn't a county road. You can only imagine the shock we had from this news. In a council meeting held November the 20th, 2017, Mr. Jaeger presented the problem to then-council members, stating the house was permitted on a non-county road. He said they were going to work through this as a team and get it taken care of one way or the other, and didn't want us to be out any money. Mr. Jaeger also stated Mayor Frank pledged her support to work with him, and they would get this done. Some concerns we've had because nothing has happened. Of course, we had a permit issued to us, and apparently it shouldn't have been to build our home. We now have a home and land we have invested close to $250,000 with no road frontage, which means it's landlocked. We can't sell, we can't refinance, we have no road sign, no address on Google, and if we have no address listed, what happens if we have an emergency? We have two children living at home. I also have health issues, so what if emergency personnel can't find us? We have spoke with Mr. Jaeger several times, and Mayor Frank was at our home before the election. We've been told numerous times they are working on it. This is now April of 2018, and still no street sign. Nothing has been done to improve our road, anything.
If it is being worked on, we have not been sent any documentation, any letters of where we're at on this situation. We kind of had a scare. What really brought this to home was a week ago Sunday, our youngest was outside playing basketball, fell and broke his wrist. Thank the Lord that we didn't have to call EMS or have an ambulance come out to the house, because I don't know if they'd have found it or not. But we just would like to, I've talked with both Mr. Jaeger and Mayor Frank, and we agreed that we could work through this as adults and not seek legal advice. And I'm willing to continue to do that, but I would like some, some dates or where we're at on this issue, so I know that we're going forward.
What was your name again, sir? I didn't catch yours. I got Denise. Mike? Yes, sir.
Moren, M-O-R-R-E-N.
Moren, was it?
Moren.
Moren. Can I ask a question?
Sure. Commissioner Scott, or Creasy, I'm sorry, I'm reading Scott.
Oh, yeah, I tried pushing my button, nothing happened.
Sorry.
I didn't get the name of the subdivision or the road that you live on.
We live in Arcadian Springs.
Arcadian, okay.
Yes.
I know where that is. It's on 440, off 441?
It is.
No.
No.
It's in Andersonville.
61, up in Andersonville.
So is your address 105?
We have, well, we don't know. I mean, the road out front is a right-of-way to the man that owns the property behind us, and he named the road Walking Horse Trail. But our, our mail goes to a box out front. They don't have mailboxes in there. So the, the address on that box is 105 Walking Horse Trail. But if you punch that in Google, you'll find nothing.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Yeah, and the other thing, when you called an ambulance, was there an issue about not having a 911 address or something?
We didn't call an ambulance.
We didn't call one. I just said that I'm glad that we didn't have to, because I didn't know if they would be able to find us or not.
And we have our ex-911 director in the office, and I know she's very familiar with 911 emergency addresses, and I'm sure that she would recommend that you get ahold of the 911 center and let them know that you, where you live, and your name and so forth, so that they could have that on record.
I believe we have done that.
Okay.
But, I mean, we also, I mean, we can't, we can't receive UPS packages, FedEx packages. It's very inconvenient.
People can't find our home.
It's been over two, two years, or right at two years. So we, we just, we just want to make sure that we're going forward with this, with it and where we're at, because we haven't received anything. Now, if we do reach out to Mr. Jaeger or, or Mayor Frank, they do contact us back. But as far as receiving a letter or a document of where we're at on it, we, we haven't received anything since the 10th of October in 2018. It was the last document that we got.
Well, first off, thank you for coming and bringing it to our attention. This is exactly how it's supposed to work. We have a motion. Commissioner McCamey, would we be okay if I hear the motion, or do you, do you want to speak? Commissioner Mead has a motion. Commissioner Mead?
Well, actually, what happened is I had a blank screen, and I tapped it to make it come on, and I got a motion. But I do have a question for the law director. Is there a motion that could be made that could, could speed up to move this along? Are we, you know, what is, what can, what could this body do to help resolve this that hasn't already been done?
I've briefed this body about this issue before. The two departments that are involved are out of my control. What needs to happen and is finish paving that road out there and make it a county road. But right now, Mr. Long is stuck in the middle of this situation. He can't utilize his road equipment on a non-county road. We need to at least extend it past their home, and there's another lot on the other side of them.
It's been purchased now.
Has it? It's going to be in the exact same situation. I want to help them so bad. I wish we had an answer, but what it's going to take is extending that road out there, building it and constructing it to county road standards. It's in a subdivision, so the subdivision requirements would be in effect there. And I would say we'll have to do it at least the length of their, the width of their yard and probably the width of the next yard. We thought at one time that the gentleman that bought the several lots at the end of their road there would attempt to improve that to county road standards, but from what I understand, he's just going to use it as a driveway, and he's not planning on building it to county road standards, and he's not planning on selling any of the lots off. So that option's off the table. In order to fix their situation, we're going to have to construct that road, and I don't believe we're going to be able to do it with Mr. Long's equipment. It's a non-county road, it's a non-county property, and that's where we're at. But to fix their situation, their addressing situation, they need to be on a county road. The zoning resolution requires that you have county road frontage before a permit is issued, and they don't have it yet. But they've already constructed their home. It's a very nice home with a very nice subdivision, and we need to take care of this situation one way or the other.
Commissioner McCamey, Mayor, please come on up. Commissioner McCamey?
More than likely, we're going to need to have Gary check with Rogers Group and get some kind of estimate there.
I've got a question for the law director.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we foreclose or accept the bond from the developer?
Bond didn't cover that. The bond, the bond at that time, Mr. Crowley wrote a letter. He had concerns about it, about that particular road. As you remember, we were short trying to finish those roads up in Arcadian Springs. We actually authorized the residual that we had with the Rogers Group that had accrued that paving to finish those roads. Well, that, for some reason, didn't get finished in front of their home. It was never taken into the county road system. It was never built to our specifications. To my knowledge, it's still not a county road, and they're living on a, a private road. They're only about 30 feet off of a county road, but the money that we had, that we cashed to complete that, evidently there wasn't enough to finish that roadway. I was out of the loop at that time, and Mr. Crowley had drawn some maps, and he showed that as one of the areas that needed to be improved, although the road wasn't named Walking Horse Trail at that time. It was, it was under another name. So that's where we're at, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on the issue.
Okay. The county commission has the authority to accept roads into the county road system.
Yeah, that's the only authority, the county commission.
So when, if we accept the road as is into the county road system, then that authorizes the road superintendent to go and work on the road?
If it's a county road, if it's accepted in the county road system.
Once we accept it into the county road system. So that's all we would need to do, is to accept that 30 feet into the county road system.
Yes, that sounds like a simple resolution. It may very well be. The issue is, though, that it, it's going to have to be constructed to county road standards. That's what we require of any subdivision developer. Somebody came in and said, look, we're going to make a subdivision. All those roads have to be built to a certain standard that's in the subdivision regs. So we're going to have to accept it, I guess in a sense, to bring it up. We have dirt roads in the county right now, and certainly a lot of gravel roads, but there's, I'd have to speak with Mr. Long to see if he's willing to work on that road if we took, went ahead and took it in. We'd need to refer it to the road committee to see if they would make that recommendation for it to be a county road.
And I don't mean to cut the conversation, but we need to take some sort of action so we can move on, and not be disrespectful at all. We just need to, does anybody?
Take it to the road, yeah.
Well, let me, I'm, I'm going to let you speak. I'm not going to cut everybody off. I mean, I'm not trying to be rude. I just want to move on. You know, we're not really supposed to debate here during the Appearance of Citizens. Commissioner Anderson, and I'll go to Commissioner Val. Mayor, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I just want, well, it's kind of what Commissioner McCamey was saying. I know Gary would not necessarily want to take, take a road that he's got to bring up to code and find the money to do that, but since this is something that we issued a permit as a county that we probably shouldn't have issued, so could we just make the exception and go ahead, since they've waited for two years, just go ahead and take the road as is into the county, and they'll at least be attached to the county and not landlocked anymore, and then deal with the construction after that.
Good comment.
Who's the chairman now of the road? Is it?
Jerry.
Jerry. Do you mind taking this issue up to the road committee?
Yes, yes. I think probably McCamey's going to have that motion here shortly. I just wanted to give, Mayor's waiting patiently. Commissioner Val, then I'll come back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to share the folks. I sympathize with you. I'm sorry that you're going through this, but our dispatch center has pulled up that address. It doesn't show a house, but it does show a location where we can send emergency services to you. Hopefully that won't, won't happen, but hopefully that may ease your concerns a little bit anyway. But I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Mayor?
Yeah, just, just to refresh memories, this did go to the road committee, and I brought this to commission and asked for guidance, and then I did take it to road committee, and I advocated for these folks. If you look back, and I actually shared the maps with the members of the highway committee, I showed where those two lots were accepted in the register of deeds office, and I did show where the legal documents were sent to the bank, and we revoked those bonds with that area noted, that it was not improved, that it needed everything. And I don't think it is their fault that the funds were not there to do the work. And so what I advocated at highway committee was that we do the work and we find the money, or perhaps there was some type of partnership that could be developed with the folk, the gentleman that bought the land behind. So at the October 8th, 2018, highway committee, I did take that, we did have the discussion. The committee reviewed the matter. They did not make an official motion, but they did request that the road superintendent come back with a estimated cost of construction and paving. And I watched, you know, that agenda. I did not see it come up. Maybe it came up at a time when I wasn't there, but that is where I left it. You know, I'm happy to work with them. I think that we have two choices as a county. We accepted the bond money, and it's not anyone's fault that lives there that we did not require enough money at that time. And you can look back at the old documents, and you can see that the money clearly, those bonds. I, I think what happened, I'm not assigning any blame, but those were tough economic times, and I think the county probably reduced those bonds, hoping to keep Arcadian Springs a viable subdivision. This is not the only issue that we're dealing with in Arcadian Springs. There are numerous issues in that subdivision, and I've had multiple families reach out to me for help on what is considered an access road, but everyone uses as a central artery road, to people don't know where their boundaries are, half of their garage is...
Let's stay on, let's stay on 105 Arcadian Springs, Walking Horse Trail for now. I mean, I'd like to fix all the problems tonight, but I can't. So what we need to do is move on. Do we have a motion? Did you have anything else to add?
Well, I guess I'm just saying, it's already gone to highway committee, and do we want to go back?
Well, you may have changed Commissioner McCamey's mind. I'd like to hear his motion. Commissioner McCamey, do you have a motion?
My motion would be to refer it to the road committee and ask them to report back to us at our May meeting.
We have a motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion, Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, we keep talking about paving the road. I mean, we have a lot of gravel roads in the county. Isn't there a standard for a gravel road in the county that we could adopt?
This is subdivision and it would be under the subdivision regulations and I wouldn't want them to be stuck with a gravel road out in front of their house, but I think we need to abide by our own regulations and we put them in place. We need to build that road subdivision regulations. One thing I will say to rest your mind to some degree, I think Regina did a good job. The way I remember it, Regina, correct me if I'm wrong, you did assign an address to it so that 911 knows where 105 Walking Horse. Now, it did not appear on the Arcadian Springs subdivision plat as that road, although that road was drawn in, but she does, she did map it and assign an address to it if I, if I'm correct.
The bank is actually the one that named it because they had foreclosed on that property and they were the ones that allowed the man behind it because he owned it and named it. But we did at that time give them an address and we mapped it. We went out and actually mapped it in. So it is on the map if they have to have.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCamey?
I was just informed that the road committee may not meet in May. Is that right, Jerry?
We canceled our April meeting, so May could be a good.
Okay.
We could make it right then.
Okay, thank you.
Second Monday of May.
Second Monday of May. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming. We appreciate, keep us posted. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good discussion. Appreciate everybody. Okay, any other citizens, parents of citizens? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval and correction of the agenda. First, the consent agenda. Have a, have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. One opposed, mark me down, no on the consent agenda. Next is the regular agenda. Any corrections?
Yeah, I make a motion to add the TCRS discussion and approval right after the, this item.
I have a motion to add the TCRS 401K to the agenda after this item, which would make it 4B. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other changes or to the agenda as presented? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to add the DRC building under the law director, please.
DRC.
DRC building. It's from the building committee to kind of give an update.
I have a motion request to add the DRC under the director, or excuse me, law director's report. We have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additions? Commissioner Fritz?
We moved the item under new businesses associated with the budget committee underneath the budget committee report.
Have a motion to move new business number 12 up to, what'd you say, Commissioner Fritz? I apologize.
Underneath the budget committee.
Underneath number six, we'll make it 6A. We're going to make item 12 under, it'll be 6A. Keep me straight, you guys, because I'm liable to miss it.
We got it right there.
Thank you. That's a motion. Do we get a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor, approving the agenda as modified and changed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next will be 4B, TCRS 401K. Who would like to make a presentation or have a discussion? We're putting you on the spot, I guess. Jay?
I thought Kim was here.
He's in the hall.
Kim Whitaker, please report to the podium.
Step up. This is Justin Ball with TCRS and he's going to talk to you about that resolution I sent out to you, the 401K and the 457. We got Kim here.
There you go. Come on up, Kim, if you want to say a few words before Justin starts speaking.
We'll just let Justin speak to what we're looking at and I'd send an email out to commission in regards to the switch over from Nationwide and the concerns and what got us to this point. We've had several meetings with staff as well as the board of trustees to discuss the issue. It was passed by the board of trustees to move this, this route.
And it's, what we're doing, and I may not understand it correctly, but what we're proposing is going from the current 401K plan that we have to the state plan. Is that summarizing some?
Sort of, but we have Nationwide, which is a 457B.
Okay.
Moving from that to the state retirement, that's going to offer a 401K as well as a 457B.
We'll explain. And the folks that are in the current system have the right to stay there if they so choose or move over.
Yes, and we're also, the board of trustees passed a five-year freeze on the Nationwide, which allows the employees five years to move that money without being penalized with freeze.
And the, and the board supports this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the questions. Yes, sir.
So my name's Justin Ball with the Department of Treasury and the first thing I want to say is essentially this does not impact TCRS at all. So sometimes that gets out there, just want to put that out there. But in 2012, the state allowed local government agencies to begin participating in the state 401K and 457 plan that the state employees, teachers have always had access to. So since that time, we've had about 300 agencies that have come into the plan and over 60 counties that have come into the plan. And some of the highlights, I think, from it are the low fee structure. And again, this is going to be, any plan that you have, obviously there's a fee structure for the, on the employee. In this case, the county would not incur any type of fee, but our fee structure, we did a fee comparison with the current plan and I believe we were just over 60% in savings. And so one of the main reasons for that is it's a large plan, so it helps us drive those fees down and the state is really not in it to make a profit on that. We're here to provide a good, low-cost plan for everyone. And the other big benefit, I think, is it comes with some education level for the employee. They'll get TCRS education and then on the backside of that, they will get a 401K and 457 education kind of integrated so they can call one number and talk to, you know, the same person about their 401K, 457 or their TCRS. So when they go to retire, they're going to sit down and have all those pieces of the puzzle together. So I think that's a big advantage to the state's plan as well. So, but again, no, no cost to the county. It is completely voluntary for the employee to participate if they choose to or not and it does not impact TCRS.
Very good, Justin. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Meredith?
I'm going to approve the resolution as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion approved, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Kim, very much. Appreciate it. Next item is purchasing committee report by Catherine Ashmery. Catherine?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
So we only have a few items today. The first item is a request to surplus capital assets. It's two vehicles as requested by EMS submitting for your approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz. Prove as presented, seconded by Commissioner Mead. We have a question. Any questions? Commissioner Scott?
What are the condition of these vehicles that?
We can hire. Tap the one you want.
I'm sorry. What is the value of these two vehicles roughly that are being?
They have the minimum value, starting bid for one of them is $500 and that vehicle has 153,922 miles. It was taken out of service in 2016. It'll start with a boost, but there's several issues on it. Did you have this email in your, from Ashley from EMS that details the condition?
Apparently not. Well, and the reason why I'm asking is if that one is taken out of service in 2016, it's 2019 now, why are we holding on to something that doesn't work for three years?
I'm not sure. If it was, maybe they were thinking they might be able to use it for parts at some time. That's, that's not a question I'd ask them. The other vehicle was just taken out of service in March of 2019. I don't know if Nathan's here and can speak to why the other one is just now being taken out of service.
He is here or is he not?
No, I don't know if he's here.
Not here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any other questions? Again, this is a request to surplus capital assets, which are two vehicles as requested by EMS. This motion was passed in purchasing to full commission and now we are to take action. We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Do you need a board vote or do you voice? It's up to you.
I think just voice.
I think voice is fine. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, sorry, we have one no, Commissioner Scott. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Go ahead, Catherine.
All right, the next item is a review of the bid reply for the sale of 205 South Main Street. We had received one bid for $300,000 and purchasing committee recommended that that bid be rejected and that we contract with Stevenson Realty and Auction to publicly auction the property with the results of that auction coming to commission before being approved.
Okay. We have a motion, Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Your motion, Commissioner McCamey?
To go ahead and auction the property.
We have a motion to auction the property as presented by the purchasing committee.
And to reject the bid.
And to reject the bid, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. We have discussion. Commissioner Anderson?
I definitely support rejecting the bid, but I just think while we've got that property in downtown Clinton and we're having so many issues with space and we didn't get 50% of what we paid for it, we should really seriously look at hanging on to it for a while and evaluating the space needs for the county and we can always sell it in five or 10 years or whatever. I think it's going to go up. I think the city of Clinton's working on it. Some downtown revitalization things, I think the value is going to go up. I just don't think we should move to sell it a lot and take a loss so fast when we've got other needs.
Good comments, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Creasy?
I agree with Commissioner Anderson that at this moment, I'd like to reject the bid as the motion states, but not to auction at the moment. I'd rather we, this motion, I'll amend the motion. Does that be proper right now to amend the motion to reject the bid only?
Not sure how that'll work, parliamentarian. Part of the motion, original motion is to reject the bid. I think probably the proper procedure, Commissioner Creasy.
We should divide it into two motions.
But maybe your motion could be to amend to reject putting it out for bids. I mean, and again, I'm not trying to.
That's my intention is, is to make it into two motions if that's, if someone wants to.
I, I, we have a motion on the floor, so, I mean, I don't want to change the course, but I, I tend to agree, we should take care of the business at hand first. I, I don't know what the bid said. I really wanted to ask a question before we started taking in any questions or motions and action. The RFP that went out on the 205 Main, were we required to notify the bidder first before we take any action?
No.
Okay, I, I'm just asking.
For, for vote and consideration.
Okay, so that's where we're at now.
Yes, sir.
So we had one bid for 205 Main. It came in at?
$300,000.
$300,000. We paid?
$600,000.
$600,000 for the property and, and the recommendation, the way it was set up, the purchasing would make the recommendation to full commission, which you're doing.
Purchasing committee is making the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, purchasing committee. I didn't mean to imply just you. Purchase committee would make the recommendation. The recommendation was to reject the bid.
Yes, and you put it out.
And put it out for bids. Okay. So parliamentarian, I'm going to need some help here in figuring out how we proceed with the motion on the floor and a second to accept the bid and then put it out, or excuse me, to reject the original bid of $300,000 and then to put it back out for bids with a auction company. We have Commissioner Creasy who has asked to amend it. What say you?
What say, I would say that it, it changes the motion instead of amends it. Other parliamentarians may, may agree or disagree with me on that, but I'd like, I'd like, Jay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It's okay.
Ask if I'm doing the right thing here, sir.
Probably the better issue is to bifurcate into two motions, but that takes Robert consenting to it. He was the maker of the original motion. If he wants to go ahead and press forward with this, just take a vote on Robert's motion. He's got a second. And if that fails, then we'll come back and try to bifurcate into two motions. That would mean one motion would be to reject both that up and down and then the second motion would be to put it out for auction with Stevenson and vote that up and down, but that's totally up to Robert.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We don't have to accept the monies that we get at an auction either. We can reject that. So that's why I said go ahead and auction it. It's not an absolute auction. We can go ahead and if we get $600,000, then I'd, you know, I'd probably do cartwheels here in the courthouse, but, you know, I, I don't see the.
Can we make that part of the motion?
Yeah.
So y'all know, there's no fees if, if the, if we don't proceed on the auction. I mean, if they go ahead and advertise it and everything and we decide not to sell it.
So there's, based on what I'm hearing you say and Commissioner McCamey say is there's no additional cost to go in this manner?
Right. They will do the advertising, they'll do the auction. If it's something that we want to reject at the time, we say no sale and we're not out anything. So, you know, it's a, the auctioneer that has looked at it, he thinks that he can sell it for basically what we paid for it. And, you know, I say give him a shot at it. It's not going to cost us anything.
All right, let's go around and let everybody speak. Good comments. I'm going to come back to Commissioner Creasy since he had an amendment on. Go ahead.
Do you need one second, my man?
I didn't get a second, no sir.
Okay. Then that's dead.
Well, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Mead, sorry, sir.
Yeah, in the purchasing committee meeting, we had lengthy discussions by very experienced people that were there and all this is really doing by putting this out for an auction is seeing what it could sell for. It doesn't obligate us to do it. It's simply, we were simply, I was convinced by the discussion that by, by professional marketing, even though I think our people did a good job, did everything they could in, in our purchasing group, okay. But, but, but bringing in some real estate professionals that are also professionals and experienced in auctioning these kind of properties, they're convinced that they could get a much higher price. Okay, and if we got a much higher price, then the commission can decide if that's high enough. But this decision to put it to, to auction, as was already said, costs us nothing. If we don't sell it, there's, there's a little fees kicked in there if it sells, but it's, it's not that much. And so I, I'm highly in favor of going ahead and, and trying this because it's just, we're simply voting to see what we could get. It's not, it's not a vote to sell it. not, it's not a vote to sell it. That would come after we see what the bid is.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Yeager.
Can we add that to the motion, is contingent upon future county commission approval?
It's in the-
That's a good one, man.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mead took care of my questions in a far better manner than I would've.
Thank you. Thank you for yielding your time. Commissioner Fritz?
Basically, Commissioner McCamey and Commissioner Mead said what I said, considering the thing here, said inform the committee that the acceptance of the offer will be subject to confirmation by county commission. If I was putting it up for bid, we, we as commission, we're not out nothing. By putting it out for auction, we're not out nothing. I mean, we have that stipulation in, where we had to approve it, we're not out nothing. We're just taking it out for a stroll, see what we get. And so we don't have nothing to lose.
So that is in Commissioner McCamey's motion?
Yes.
And Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no commission for Mr. Stevenson, it's buyer will pay him.
Good point. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Mead and Commissioner Fritz already said what I was going to say, but speaking as chairman of the Purchasing Committee, that's exactly how it was presented. There's no cost to us. He thinks that he can get, you know, quite a bit more out of it, and as we go along, we could also, you know, do the planning for the future just in case, but thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Catherine, when do you believe that the auction would be set for?
Once y'all approve getting it out there, you said 60 days.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking this is because currently, we're allowing the Sheriff's Department to utilize that building for getting their vehicles ready.
I'm not, I don't think-
They're not doing that?
No, they, they sent a, the sheriff sent an email out and said, I mean, the sheriff, you can speak to it if you like, sir.
Yeah, there were some concerns about using that building, so we just opted. We appreciate the Commission-
Okay.
Doing that for us, but we opted just to go with the previous route we went.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Good point, though. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Creasy, sir.
Yeah, I would feel better if Chuck, or Commissioner Fritz's comments was an amendment to the motion.
Well, how about if we just have Commissioner McCamey restate his motion, just to make sure that everything-
Would you, would you repeat the motion that the Purchasing Committee made and forwarded to County Commission with recommendations for approval?
Yes. Commissioner Denenberg made a motion that Purchasing Committee reject the bid offer of $300,000 for 205 South Main, and send a full commission for discussion, the possibility of putting the property out for public auction. And then in the next part, it was, it's noted that County Commission, that acceptance of an offer through an auction would be subject to confirmation from County Commission.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Commissioner McCamey.
I'll keep my second.
You got your second on that, okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board on this one to vote.
Rejecting and re-auctioning.
Yes. I say go to the board, but I have to have my units turn on here. What am I doing wrong? Okay, reconnecting. Votes are locked, we're waiting. 15 yes, one no. Motion passes. Next, Catherine?
All right, next, under the section of new business, this was new business for the Purchasing Committee, because Kim just got this contract like an hour before the meeting started. And this is a contract with Medbin from the, it's been approved by the Board of Trustees now, and it's also been approved by Jay, and it's a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options for Health Benefit Administration Services submitting for your approval.
Thank you, Catherine. Commissioner Meredith, the motion approved as presented?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Isbell?
That was a, that was only meant to be a second.
Okay. So Commissioner Meredith with the motion, Commissioner Isbell with the second. Commissioner Fritz, discussion?
Healthcare benefits, right. I'm hearing a lot of discussion and everything, that a lot of the doctors and stuff are out of network. And, as it's true, and if the doctors are out of network, and they're going to have an employee benefit discussion thing this coming Thursday, should we not postpone this until after the employees have a chance to review and comment and things that nature, and maybe take this up next month, and so after employees have a chance to review this? Because, and if it's, if all the doctors in this area are out of network, why did we go for someone that, where all of our doctors are out of network? I'm, in my insurance, I have, we are encouraged to use in-network doctors instead of out-of-network doctors, because it's more expensive.
So, I know a lot of employees have had some discussions, and there's been some anxiety. Medbin is not an insurance company, and I think that's where a lot of the confusion has been. Medbin is the third-party administrator, meaning they are the people that handles the paperwork, okay? They are not the insurance company. We had a report run, it's called a disruption report, and what it takes is the physicians that Anderson County employees have used over the past 12 months, the plan that was submitted, how many of those was not accepted? There was 9%. Now, out of those, the majority of them was a visit here or there. You know, if you go in to have a procedure, and it's a certain pathologist, you don't get to choose who that pathologist is that checks any biopsies that's done, those type things. And so there are some anesthesiologists, you don't get to choose those. We have found that there's also been some anesthesiologists that's not accepted in Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's no way that an employee can, can do that. Best due diligence, they can't control that. We can't control that. There were a few that we have already asked Medbin to reach out to, to contract with on behalf of Anderson County. Even though a card may say Medbin and the insurance company is PHCS is actually who it is, that will be listed on that card, but what we have to remember is that we are self-funded, meaning Anderson County pays those claims, not an insurance company. They, they do facilitate, and they do watch out for it, and they scrub the claims, and they present us with the invoices, they make sure that it's correct, but they do not pay the bills. So that's important for us to realize. Yes, there is a workshop, and what I've asked for is that we do a 50-mile radius of physicians, as well as hospitals that are accepted. That way, the employees have that information, and also hand out the listing of the 91% that are being accepted, and that accept the insurance of PCHS, and make sure that that's understood.
Right now, there's a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of very strong concerns-
Yes, sir.
-about the employees, because a lot of people's been calling, a lot of people's have stressed their things about, as a matter of fact, some of them are upset about it.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason I thought I raised this up, because it became a bore for us to approve it, you know, to, because of the fact, you know, that employees are concerned about their healthcare and the costs associated with it.
I'm very concerned, as far as what we're doing, and, and in the email I sent out today, I let you all know that it's a 10-week process to do a switchover. And during that process, I've asked for the employees to submit any physician that they're afraid that may not be part of that, and let us go and start, start that process. Let us check it, see if they are an in-network provider. And if not, let's go and start contracting with them and get that taken care of before July 1.
Thank you, Kim. Is that good? I mean, answer your questions. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually had the same question Commissioner Fritz had. I've also been getting phone calls and comments from county employees, and I think a lot of it is related to the confusion of how the insurance process works. We're basically self-insured.
We are self-insured.
We're, Anderson County's our own insurance company.
Correct.
What we do is we hire a third party to come in who knows how to handle the claims and the paperwork, and knows the coding and all that kind of stuff, is that right?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. But getting back to Chuck's point, who does make the final decision on in-network, out-of-network?
So with, just like Blue Cross Blue Shield, Humana, Medbin, we have the option to, what they call, purchase a network. PCHS was the one that overlaid and met as many of the providers that they did. 91% is really a good percentage rate, much better than what I was expecting, to be honest. But if it is an out-network, out-of-network provider, that gives us the ability, and we have done this with Blue Cross Blue Shield, where we have found out that they did not have a contract with a provider, and we asked them to contract for that, on that employee's behalf, and they did so. So we have the ability to do that the entire time, so-
So an employee can come to HR-
Correct.
And say, "The doctor that I need to see, or my spouse needs to see, is out of network, and we have a process in place to get them in-network."
Correct. That's been in place the entire time.
Okay. Is there a need to have this passed before Thursday, to where all of our employees can understand this process, as you just explained?
So July 1 starts the new, whatever's been decided, the new insurance plan. It is a, like I said, a 10-week process. It's quite lengthy, and the first week of May, just like always, which usually been in April, we've pushed it off to the first week of May to have information sessions. We want our employees to be able to have the time to make an informed decision on the plans that they're selecting. If we push it off much longer, they're not going to have that time. We're talking about, if you can't pass it until May at commission, then you've got the month of June to make those decisions before it goes into effect, July 1. And I'm, Robbie is really good in finance, he is really good, but we have an antiquated system that requires us to touch every employee's benefit. Not just one, but 12 to 14 of them, that we have to touch every one of them before it gets inputted into the system. And I just don't know if it's possible for us to make that change that quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Waddell?
Kim, do we have any idea what the rates are looking like, what they're shaking up for? Are they better, or the prescription rates? I know that was a big concern. I've heard a lot, a lot of comments about that.
You and me both. So the way that that works, and again, that's set by the Board of Trustees, and it goes along with what is occurring. So for January, February, March, we use those three months. Once March ends, we've got a pretty good look at what, what we're looking at for the next year, where our claims are coming in, whether it's prescription or health or whatever. And, and that is what those are based upon, okay? March just ended. Yes, I have the numbers back, and we are crunching those. I hope to have that information by Thursday. But again, that comes down to the Board of Trustees does start that process as far as what the rates look like. So to answer your question, not just yet. The Board of Trustees meets on the 23rd, and that is what's on for discussion to be talked about, and hopefully be decided.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Smallridge?
I just wanted to be clear, is, so it sounds like there's almost no reason why a provider would not, in one way or another, be included as part of the-
Correct.
Is that correct, my-
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item under Purchasing Committee is Tuppertown property. We had recently surplus it, and Purchasing Committee has now made a recommendation to auction the property innocent entirely with no minimum starting amount. Submitting for your approval.
We have motion, Commissioner McCamey.
Make a motion to go ahead and auction the property.
Seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on the Tuppertown property being auctioned with no minimum starting bid? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Catherine. Have a good evening. Finance Director, excuse me, Budget Committee report by Natalie Earp, Finance Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first is the cash and fund balance report.
Page five.
I'm actually on it, Commissioner Scott, thank you.
Right, this report is as of March, it's three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. For the general fund, the non-spendable fund balance is a little over $1 million. The restricted fund balance is $1.4 million. Committed funds are $2.3 million. Assigned funds are $800,000, and unassigned fund balance is $4.5 million. That brings the total fund balance to over $10 million. The cash balance in the general fund is just shy of $13.5 million. In the general fund, the unassigned fund balance is above that $4 million threshold, requiring additional votes. And on the next page, I have the quarterly graphs to present, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Natalie Earp? Natalie, just real quickly, I've probably asked you this before, difference between the cash and the total fund balance? Cash, I guess just cash on hand, we have access to, or?
No, that's total cash. Cash is an asset. You also have other assets that are not liquid, such as accounts receivable. That gets you your total assets.
Okay.
If you subtract your total liabilities, that gets you your fund balance. So it's total assets minus total liabilities is your total fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, good explanation. For some, I guess.
Okay, so moving on to the graphs. Again, these are as of March, three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year. Starting with the general fund cash trends, you'll see that that green line as of March is slightly above where we were this time last year. And then it's really the highest cash point the county's enjoyed in the last several fiscal years. Moving to the, the right, the general fund actuals year-to-date as of March, the blue bars and trend line are revenues, the orange bars and trend lined are expenses, and the gray is the surplus as of the third quarter. You'll see that the revenue and expense trends are both increasing at about the same rate, and that's 8% compared to fiscal year 2015. And 2015 was also our last reappraisal year. And then moving down to the general fund, unassigned fund balance trends, you'll see too, that this is also favorable compared to recent fiscal years, really going back to 2014. And then I would just note as a note, that we budgeted for a deficit of $763,000 in this fiscal year, current fiscal year. So happy to-
Obviously exceeded the budget in revenue.
Right.
Right.
We've appropriated money in excess of revenues that were budgeted.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Continue.
Okay, so going to the summary of budget amendments. Submitting for your approval individually or as a group, Group 2 Appropriations School, board vote, please.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, approved as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously.
There are none under Group 3. Moving to Group 4, Appropriations, non-school, also seeking board vote individually or as a group.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, approved as a group, sir. I have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Discussion, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Natalie, the $115,000, tell me, is this-
Are you in Group 6?
I'm on page 14, the Sheriff's Department.
I think you're a group or two ahead of us.
Sorry?
I think you're, we're on Group 4.
It's just a little bit further down.
I'm on page 14.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that one yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
It's okay. No, no, I will never forget you're here. Commissioner Waddell?
Group 4, it, uh, number 30 and 31, I would like to pull those out. This board has recently began talking about seeking a private ambulance service coming in, and until we decide what we're going to do with that, I don't want to spend a total of $44,000, $45,000 on, on a transport van and another cot. So I would like to pull those two out.
Commissioner Waddell, we have a motion and a second to approve as a group. However, if you'd like to recommend an amendment to the motion to pull out those two, you can certainly make that request now.
I would.
Make that as amendment to pull out items 30 and 31?
Yes, sir.
You have a motion for amendment? Is there a second to that?
Second.
A second, Commissioner Scott, to the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, let's go to the board on amendment. Can you do that without messing up your, okay? So a yes vote will be to pull out 30 and 31. A no vote would be to just leave them in on their original motion as made. Motion fails. Should have nine, we only have eight yes. Should have nine, we only have eight yes and eight no's. Motion fails, correct, Parliament? Okay, moving on. Back to the original motion. Any other questions on the original motion to approve as a group in Group 4?
Is it open for discussion?
I would think so.
There you go.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. To bring to light, item number 31 is where Commissioner Waddell was speaking of the $20,000, I'm sorry, the $22,500. In there is a request for $10,000 to go towards a vehicle. Back in February, Nathan had brought a request to the Budget Committee and wanted $25,000 for a white transport van. And at that time, we agreed to $15,000. He's telling us at this point that he's not able to find anything online, and he wants an additional $10,000, bringing it up to the $15,000. Oddly enough, I did a little checking just through Google, and I found 48 white vans under $10,000 online. So I will be voting no for the whole package then, I suppose.
Understood.
Okay.
Commissioner Mead. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner, Commissioner Mead. Apologize, I'm out of order. Commissioner Waddell, then I'll come to you, sir, I apologize. Commissioner Waddell.
Just to clarify, all I'm asking is that we just set this out for 90 days. I'm not asking for us to deny, to deny these, these items that, that they're gonna need if we continue with Anderson County EMS. All I'm asking for is that we set them out for 90 days. That way, if, if this board, whatever they decide, if they decide to go with a private company, then we would've spent $45,000, and we would be turning those assets over to a private company or having to sell them ourselves. So, just to clarify, I'm not asking that we, we not approve these as later date. I'm just asking that we set them out for 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Mead.
I've said this before, but not long ago, we paid $40,000 for some national, nationally-known experts to advise us on how to do our EMS. And they told us not to consider bidding it out to a private contractor because for the depth, the way that Anderson County is, has a lot of, I'll refer to as, non-urban areas, that it would, it would not work for a county with our characteristics. If we don't go ahead with this, the other thing I wanted to say is that a, a white van that you might find online does not necessarily meet the requirements for the van they have to have to meet state and federal requirements to use as a transport van. It takes more than just being a white van online. I see this as being reasonable, and I want to say again, the number one criticism we got from that expert team is that we had dramatically underfunded our EMS for the last six years, and we needed to get them equipped and also start taking care of their salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Smallrich.
Yeah, I think the discussion to possibly outsource this program, our EMS program, it's the first time I've heard anything about it is within the last week or so. And I think it's something that would require a tremendous amount of study and looking at very, very critically. And to hold off on this because we might, at some point down the future, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be very soon, and I would think, go to an outsource of this, of this program is ridiculous.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallrich. I, I, I believe the issue at hand is item 30 and 31. Comparing it to making a decision on EMS in, in these two items, to me, is not relevant. But I certainly appreciate your comments, that's what we're here to do and have discussion on it. Natalie, you can help out here, I believe, I don't see any more discussion, but item 30 and, what's that?
Mayor.
Oh, come on up, Mayor, didn't see her, thank you. But while the mayor's walking up, Natalie. Item 30 and 31, it's saying increased revenue code for the insurance recovery of $20,668.80, increased expenditure code of other equipment for the same amount. Is that correct? Okay. And then we go down to item 31, and then it's increased revenue code, insurance recovery for 22.5. I guess the total amount for the insurance recovery was $40,000 and...
It was actually, yeah, actually it was more than that. I think that so far this fiscal year, I think they've received almost $80,000 in insurance recovery money.
So, the request here for these two items is utilizing those insurance recovery funds in, in the manner that's presented.
That's correct.
So the funds are there.
That's correct.
And, and, and the director of EMS is requesting it this way.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to help clarify on the transport van, and then also for the folks at home. EMS transports deceased to the forensic center, and it's not actually a requirement of EMS. And so when we were looking at cost savings and, and how to do a better job financially inside EMS, we looked at outsourcing. And so what we did was contact local funeral homes to do that work. What ended up happening is the District Attorney General, the Chief of Police, law enforcement reached out to us, and they said, "Look, we like how your team does it. We're assured of safe handling of any narcotics that are on scene. We know, you know how to properly handle the deceased. We know and trust the methods that are in place. Can you continue to do that job?" And so this was a way of still doing that work for law enforcement, still staying in the business, but doing it in a cost-savings way, where we're not using an ambulance, a 911 vehicle, to be able to do that. And then also, the plan that Nathan has set up in this is to offer this as, you know, additional work, if you will, to anyone in the department. So if the transport is needed, it will go out as a message to the team and whoever would like to come in and do that work. So that's what that's about, and we also hope, you know, maybe even open that up to anyone who might like to from the Sheriff's Department, you know, that, to be able to use that vehicle. And so Nathan was unable to find one for $10,000 because understandably, they don't wanna go past so many years old. More recent, current vehicles have better gas mileage, therefore you're saving in gas money. But anyhow, that's what that's for, and I just wanted folks to know that, that's, that was the purpose.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Yeager.
Mayor, can you hang on for a second? You may not know the answer to this, but since you're up there, what, what are the special requirements that this vehicle have?
I, I think they are, I don't know all of them. I mean, they, they want, basically, when you're doing a transport, it has to be, the person has to be secured in a certain way. And then you also have to have the ability, sometimes we're dealing with, you know, bad situations that will require the vehicle to be cleaned out and fully sanitized in a way that the normal ambulance isn't. And so they do have a partition because, I mean, you know, sometimes you're recovering someone that's been out in the field for three months or six weeks or something like that, and so they have a separation that does not exist in your regular ambulance, so...
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, one last time.
Sure. In February, when it was brought to budget, it says, "Purchase of transit 150-style vehicle for performance of descendant..." I'm sorry, it's very small. "...transports to UT Forensics in lieu of using an ambulance. Vehicle will be marked to identify as an EMS vehicle, but it will not be equipped like an ambulance. Will not install emergency equipment such as a radio, siren, and full set of emergency lights. Will install some scene lights at a later date. Will install a wall that separates the driver compartment from the rear section. In the future, will apply a Rhino-style sealant to the rear interior for waterproofing to ease in cleanup. Already have mounts for stretcher, and will use old stretcher that we already have. Amount is for vehicle and decals, see attached, et cetera." And it was $25,000, and we agreed to $15,000 at that time. And it's simply, you know, two months ago, and he's saying he can't find anything online, and he hasn't had the opportunity to check in Knoxville and surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, one thing I just want to, well, a critical issue here is that if we have people that are not county employees, okay, that go and recover bodies and evidence at a scene, okay, it would be very, very difficult to maintain a legal chain of custody on that evidence, and that's why the District Attorney is interested in the fact that our county people still handle this, because they are qualified to maintain legal custody of the evidence. If it gets turned over to somebody in a private company, I think you'll find that we will, it will, it'll completely collapse in court. And any evidence that was maintained at that recovery site would be not admissible in court.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. All right, so we have no more discussion. Been plenty of discussion, Group 4, as a group. We will now vote if there's no other discussion.
We're voting, excuse me, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're voting to take them as a group.
Approve, we are gonna vote to approve the entire Group 4. If anyone on this body is against items 31 or 30 or any other items in this Group 4, they can certainly vote the way they wish, but we are voting on the entire Group, Group 4 as presented. Any other questions? Let's go to the board and vote. 13 yes, 3 no's. Motion is approved. Carry on.
Okay, the next one is Group 5, Transfers Non-School. This one, budget amendment, is for, or it's related to payroll, so board vote, please.
Any questions? We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board, place your vote. 16 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Group 6, and this is the group, Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're, the question that you had, it's in this group. So there are two being presented for your approval individually or as a group. These are drawing down the unassigned fund balance. Submitting for your approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz. Individually. Commissioner Fritz, motion individually, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, individually. Any discussion on that? Commissioner White, did you have something, sir?
Yes, thank you. The $115,000 from the Sheriff's Department, does this, coming out of general, of the general fund balance, does this impact our maintenance of effort for next year?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Good question. I apologize, I should've probably took the vote first. Any other questions? Commissioner Fritz, did you have something else?
I just, you know, have one, very, 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 and I'm gonna address you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One very serious problem. As we go throughout the budget cycle and the budget meetings month after month after month, there's a constant attack on the EMS system. And I don't know whether it's, people don't like Nathan or whoever, but it's a constant attack on, whether it's $5, $20, $15,000 or what, there's a constant attack on the EMS system. And they constantly vote against, or tried to vote against every single thing that comes out for the EMS system.
Commissioner Fritz.
I'm, I'm, I'm working towards that. Here we had the $115,000 that came up on the sheriff's thing. I'm voting for it. Don't get, nobody get me wrong, I'm gonna vote for this. The sheriffs came up with a way to fund this, their own department, but they came up with the reason, you know, it's gonna hurt them if they done so, but they, we can fund it out of our own department, but it's gonna cramp us, it's gonna really hurt us. We can't hire nobody, we can't go and do something either, and I understood that. But it came out of the thing, well, let's take it out of the fund balance, and whoa, it was wholeheartedly funded, and, because if we don't take it out of fund balance, it's gonna be an audit finding, and we can't have an audit finding. So instead of taking it out of the budget, like, you know, it's gonna cramp our staff for a couple of months, we're gonna take it out of the fund balance, and that's totally acceptable, totally all right, but the guys who are fighting EMS, every single dollar are very wholeheartedly ready to take it out of the fund balance and take that fund balance down. Now that is not right. We need to be, work together as a group of commissioners and fund every single department to same, and quit saying, "Maybe I work for the Sheriff's Department, and we need to help the Sheriff's Department all we can," and we do need to help the Sheriff's Department. They need the help. But we don't need to attack the EMS department when we have to spend $40,000 and have a team of experts come in here and tell us that we are underfunding them and have underfunded them for years and years and years, but we don't have, but we have people constantly begrudging every single dollar that we try to give them, but then when something comes up, we automatically take it out of fund balance. And this right here is a prime example, a prime thing, that they overrode what they wanted to go, and it's gonna cramp our staff, it's gonna hurt us, but let's take it out of fund balance, and, because that's the only thing we can do to avoid an audit finding. And that is not right.
Done?
Done.
Thank you. Commissioner Fritz, you've been sat in this seat several times. You know what you're talking about right now, has nothing to do with these motions we're getting ready to take. Let me finish, I let you talk, you let me talk. None of the commissioners up here tonight have been rude, they have not talked derogatory to any department head, they have asked questions. They are entitled to ask questions. In fact, I would argue it's their job to ask questions. I've heard you and Commissioner Mead over here reference the EMS audit at least 20 times in the last week. Yes, we did. Why did we? You ever thought about that question?
We're not experts.
Well, that's right. So we hired an outside source, which I would argue wasn't really outside, because we are, we hired an EMS firm to give us an audit report. The shame of it is, we had to hire an outside firm to do it. We couldn't seem to do it internally. Now, we can disagree on it, and that's fine, but the problem is, we had to hire someone to do it because there were some issues in whatever capacity. So I'm not gonna sit here as the chairman and let you or anyone on this body start attacking our commissioners, who are doing their job, and I, I may be way off key here, but I haven't heard any commissioners attacking Mr. Sweet tonight. I've, I've heard reasonable, logical questions.
You were in the Budget Committee meeting.
Mr. Fritz, I have never interrupted you when you're talking when you're chairman, and I'd appreciate it if you'd let me talk as chairman.
Then I'll refute your charges after you finish talking then.
I tell you what, Commissioner Fritz, I'm gonna shut up and let you talk some more, just so you can prove your point. The point is, there isn't nobody on this body attacking anybody. I was at the Budget Committee, and the one that was doing the attacking, Mr. Fritz, was you.
You were not at the Budget Committee.
Yes, I was, I sat right over there. Sure was. Are you gonna tell me I'm wrong too? Please do. Yeah, well, the point of order is, we should be voting on the items that are before us, the motion Commissioner Fritz made for General Fund 101 Sheriff's Department, the General Fund 101 for miscellaneous communications. And, and I'd like to get back to the action at hand and take care of that, and let's not get off track again. We have a question. I'm gonna let, I appreciate the question, doesn't mean I have to give it to you, that's not a rule. I'm gonna let Commissioner Fritz finish. Go ahead, sir.
All I'm saying, you can watch the notes, you can watch the meetings, and you can constantly see what's going on. I don't have to sit here and try to defend what's going on. People can see it. You can watch the tapes, people can see it. So that's all I have to say. I've got video proof, I've got everything, what's going on when, when it comes to...
on when it comes to how this is being done.
Video proof, emails. I've seen some emails that I question too. But we won't do that tonight, we'll just try to take care of business. Appreciate your comments. Commissioner Creasy?
Well, we're a body here, and we have to respect each other, and I think that Mr. Commissioner McCamey's motion to call for a question is a motion to end the discussion we're having. And I think that was a very appropriate motion that he made. And I'll second the motion to end the discussion that we're having.
That's a two-thirds vote, sir.
So are you wanting to end the discussion on the motion on the floor, or is that what you're asking?
No.
End the discussion we're having.
My motion was to call for the question, which takes a two-thirds majority of this body in discussion.
But the chairman has the right to disallow that?
No, not if it gets a second. You voted up or down, and it does take a two-thirds majority.
Okay, let's go for it. Let's clear the board, let's vote for it. Yeah, Commissioner Creasy, second. Motion passes. Fourteen yes, two noes. Commissioner Jaeger, Commissioner Mead, no. We end the discussion now and get back to business. We have a motion on the floor to pass, is that correct, Natalie?
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen. General Fund, Sheriff's Department, $115,000. Any other discussion on that item? Let's go to the board and vote. Sixteen yes, zero noes. Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda item number 28, and this is also miscellaneous communications.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Sixteen yes, motion passes unanimously.
So now moving on to group seven, miscellaneous. We can do these individually or as a group. There are only two action items, Section B and Section D, that passed at the Budget Committee that came to commission for a recommendation. One was for the TCRS employer contribution rate to remain at 7.33 percent, and D was the 10% delinquent tax fees into the General Fund 101.
Have a motion by Commissioner White to accept as presented, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Let's go to the board. You need this a board vote? Voice vote?
Because one's an appropriation, board vote, please.
Thank you.
B and D.
In group seven?
In group seven.
I don't see any dollar figure. Why is it an appropriation?
The 7.33 will be, it's the amount going to the next fiscal year. I guess you could, I guess you can do a board vote, and we'll just approve it at the budget, but I've got to sign this document and send it to the state, that's why I'm seeking board vote.
I have no problem with the board vote.
And then, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't ask for a round of speak, but.
Oh, your phone?
The 10% delinquent tax fee into the General Fund, is that also a?
We should probably hold off on that, I think Commissioner Fritz asked that we talk about that next. Is that right, Commissioner Fritz? 10% delinquent tax fee?
No, that was the channel.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Would you like me to read the motions that the Budget Committee passed?
Sure, sure, that'd be helpful.
Section B, the Finance Director proposed keeping the employer contribution to TCRS at 7.33 percent, which is slightly above the minimum employer actuarial determined contribution rate of 6.99. Motion by Commissioner Teresa Scott, seconded by Bob Smallridge, passed to refer to commission with a recommendation for approval. Section D, motion by Commissioner Chuck Fritz to return the 10% delinquent tax fees to the General Funds, seconded by Teresa Scott. After discussion, the motion passed to refer to Anderson County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. Voting no was, at the time, Commissioner Bob Smallridge and Commissioner Jerry White.
That's section B.
That was D, B and D.
I need some additional information. I mean, I thought the delinquent tax monies were handled by the trustee, and she chose whoever.
It's really a confirming vote. The funds are reseeded and are in the General Fund. The action that came before the committee was to have an action that commission also approve, that really says we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, so we're not doing anything that's contrary to what?
Not to my knowledge.
The trustee. Regina? You want to help me on this? I don't understand, we've never done this before that I know of.
At the budget meeting, Commissioner Fritz made a motion that the 10% delinquent tax attorney fee go into the General Fund, and I brought paperwork with me to prove to him that it is already going into General Fund. And Commissioner Scott seconded that motion, so then we brought it on here for, I guess you all to approve, for it to do what it's already doing.
Okay, so that's, okay.
I mean, if.
If it's already doing it, what's the problem with just ensuring it is doing it?
Yeah, that's what.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Several years ago, White, he made a motion that to take it down to 1%. We're not quite sure. I agree with the mayor. Mayor said we need to set this thing at 10%, make sure we're still getting it in the General Fund, and this just makes sure we're exactly, the clerk of master is collecting it at 10%, we want to assure that our rate is at 10%. This doesn't hurt Regina in any way. Am I correct, Regina?
I hope not.
It goes into the General Fund, and she's not getting it.
Or you'll see me back again next month, I guess.
She's not getting it, the 10%. It's going into the General Fund, we just need to confirm it is that our rate is 10%, and it's going into the General Fund.
Thank you, Jake.
That's the purpose.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, Commissioner Smallridge.
I just wanted to clarify, the reason I voted no was because I felt like we needed some further clarification on this, and why are we voting to do something we're already doing? But, you know, that was the reason for my no vote in the Budget Committee.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other comments? Board vote? Let's go vote. We already voted, there you go, you just haven't cast it yet. Sixteen yes, motion passes unanimously, to continue what we're doing, 10% into the undesignated fund. Thank you.
And then group eight, since Budget Committee met, I've received four budget amendments that I've been asked to bring before commission without having already gone to Budget Committee. Three of them are in your package. They're the last three budget amendments in your package, and I passed the fourth one out tonight. Two of them are transfers, I'll just read them individually, and then you can decide which action you'd like to take individually or as a group. One is a transfer between, in the county clerk for 1,450 dollars. Another one is a transfer in the county attorney for a transfer of $1,300. The next two are appropriations from restricted funds. One is on behalf of the mayor and animal care and control for $7,000. And then the last one, the one that I passed out, is on behalf of the Drug Control Fund for $43,000.
Page 34, 35 on your iPads if you're looking. You're welcome. You want to take them individually? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Meredith as a group, seconded by Commissioner Jameson as a group, sir. Thank you. Any discussion on taking up these three, is it four?
Four.
Four, including the one you handed out.
Three plus the one that I handed out, total of four.
Yes, clip math coming in, Jameson didn't teach me math. Okay, Commissioner Scott, before we vote.
Mayor, didn't we just appropriate $10,000 for animal control?
I mean, don't want to speak for you, but yes.
We did. We had an estimate on what it would cost to replace the cat house, and Commissioner Smallridge actually made that request. It's taking more than we thought. I don't have a final estimate, we think it'll be maybe an additional 5,000, but I requested seven because we do not have a place for the cats now. So they're being farmed out at different places. We have a number of folks that are making contributions, that are donating funds, also donating work. The inmates are helping us as well in the Sheriff's Department, and we have one building supply company that, well, it's a developer's actually made a donation towards the building supplies of $1,000. So we've got a lot of help coming together, but it's just a little bit more than we thought it was going to be when we first embarked upon the project.
Approximately, how many animals will this hold?
I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know. I mean, currently, we have, we had in there capacity for 12, and this will increase our capacity, so.
And you're still, you are still, are, you are still sending them out to PetSmart?
PetSmart, yes.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Beautiful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smallridge? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, it's not only the cats for this building, they also have all their food for the dogs and the cats, and they have an office space in there where they meet with people. It's, last time I was there, I would just characterize the building as in really, really bad shape. It was not something we'd need to continue with.
It said it was to complete construction of a new cat holding structure. I realize that it is where they also keep supplies as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Sixteen yes, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that's all I have, other than the, I know that their agenda was moved around.
Yes, the agenda was moved around. Any other questions for Ms. Earp before she leaves the podium? Thank you, Natalie, job well done, as always. Yes, yeah, Chuck, we moved up the televised budget committee meetings on Channel 95, requested by Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Fritz.
When we were doing the budget, and Channel 95 came by, we discussed, he asked if there was anything else he'd like to be, have budgeted. We discussed that with operations that being budgeted, I mean, televised, that the only other major committee that's not televised is the Budget Committee, and we'd like to have it televised. And they came back the other day, and they were sent home because it had been approved by budget, I mean, full commission. And so I had to apologize to the citizens who are watching that, if you didn't get to watch the Budget Committee meeting the other day, we didn't get it actually approved here. So I put it on the agenda, so hopefully we can get it approved through agenda, so the Budget Committee, along with operations, our two major committees, can be televised, and citizens can watch it at home. And so I'd like to move that we ask the Channel 95 to start televising the Budget Committee meetings along with the, like they do the operations committee, so the two major committees can be seen at home.
Motion?
Yes, motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner. Okay. Mead, was you going to second it as well?
I'll be the second.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Let's give this one to Jameson. We're going to give you the second on this one. That's something you have to take up with Natalie. Okay, any discussion, Commissioner McCamey?
It was brought up in our operations committee meeting, and I'm already 99% sure that it came to the full commission to televise those, I think. Commissioner Isbell made the motion, and I seconded.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, if we need to reaffirm that, I'm all in favor of it, but I think they need to be televised. I know they were here, and they started televising, and then they had a vote to not do it, and I started immediately getting calls, what's going on, you know, something fishy going on, because they're not going to televise it now. So, you know, I'm very much in favor, but I think it already has been approved.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Isbell?
Mr. Chairman, and I think when we had that discussion, we approved it, I made the comment that I think all of our committee meetings need to be televised, just like our purchasing committee, you know, you've seen a lot of questions there. And if the public had the opportunity to watch that at home, they would understand why it comes to this board, and to just vote it up or vote it down. But I'm supportive of televising every committee that we can.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Commissioner Denenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make this short. Excuse me. The vote during the Budget Committee meeting, I believe I was the one who made the motion, and I was doing so because I think that our chairman had asked that we, since we had visitors that were coming to talk with us, kind of off the cuff, about their recollection of something that took place when they were on commission. And my memory serves me as that was the reason that we had decided not to televise just that portion, not the minute, I mean, the meetings themselves.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm hearing recess, people want to, 10-minute recess, 10 minutes.
8:37.
8:37. You're Johnny on the spot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, buddy.
For too many decades, Tennessee has ranked in the bottom 10 among the least healthy states. But because thousands of people across the state are joining the movement to be more active, eat better, and reduce tobacco use, we are creating a Healthier Tennessee. That movement has taken hold here in Anderson County, where a local committee has led a grassroots effort to achieve the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness, Healthier Tennessee, community designation.
Active Anderson was lucky enough to receive funding from the Healthier Tennessee Communities Initiative. With the support of community programs, we are looking to increase healthy physical activity, better nutrition, including run clubs and competitive track events, gardening, tobacco education, and focusing on prevention of new smokers.
This movement doesn't end with a designation. In fact, it's only building. To get involved with the Active Anderson Committee, visit facebook.com/activeandersontn. We are ASAP of Anderson. We are celebrating 10 years of prevention, powered by more than 11,000 hours given by volunteers like you. Together, we've reduced underage substance misuse in our county by 53.5%. Our brand has changed, but our mission remains the same: Prevention Works.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. He said to hit it one more time, and I'm not going to disappoint. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Next is the Director of Schools, Mr. Parrot, Dr. Parrot, I apologize, we took a break. I know you've had a long day and I appreciate your patience.
It's always a pleasure staying in front of the commission and talk about the great things that happen in Anderson County schools. I hope you've had a chance to read our report, and just a few things that I'd like to go over. May the 3rd, we will be graduating our fourth class of our middle college students. We're excited about that. We go to a, they call it a courting ceremony on the, April the 30th, and it's always a great time to do that. Another thing, we are having our Teacher of the Year banquet tomorrow night, and Anderson County Schools has a table. If somebody, you all would like to come, you can be our guest. If not, I'll have to pay a little extra, but you all come on, okay? It's at First Baptist Church in Clinton.
What time, sir?
6 o'clock, okay? Talk about just, the ESG project is in full swing. We have doing the, redoing the lights at Anderson County Football Field. We're putting on all new LED lights on that, and that will really reduce the cost of the money we have to pay every time we use those lights. And it was amazing how they just took the top of that pole off and set another one on there. It was costing us, those lights were over, I think somebody said they're almost 30 years old. And every time they had to climb the pole and put a light bulb in it, it cost $500 just to climb the pole. And so I think these are, these have a 20 to 25 year life, so we're excited about that. We've got a lot of state winners in CTE this year that are going to nationals. There was a budget amendment to put some more money in student travel, we're excited about that. Another thing is, as you know, last year we started at Clinton Middle School, the College and Career Academy. We had the State of Tennessee here last week to see what we're doing, and they are going to use us as a model school for the state. And that's pretty amazing. Rayanne and her staff's done a tremendous job at Clinton Middle School, doing a lot of those things. Another thing is, Clint Schrader for Community School, Mr. Leach and his staff, they have been awarded exemplary status in alternative education. There's four schools in the state that get that, and our school system was one of them. And alternative education takes on a lot of things. It's not just when somebody gets in trouble. It's all different things. If somebody needs a little more help, as you know, we have Bridge Academy, we have 21st Century, we have an online middle school, and all those things fall under that umbrella. So we went to Nashville last Friday, and that was awarded to Mr. Leach and Mr. Stecker Kane. And it was just a great time. And next month, the state will be coming to formally recognize us at the board meeting, so we're excited about that. As you know, we have a new website that they're working on. Ryan Sutton is over our communications, and then Wade Haney, as you know, Johanna Whitley retired in January, and the board approved for me to hire Wade Haney as our new Director of Technology, and he took over in January, but he's permanent now, so he's doing a great job. So we're excited about that. Kindergarten roundup is in full swing, and if you didn't get a chance to go to the Anderson County art show, you missed a treat. They did an excellent job, the students and the faculty and everything, and we hope that. Melissa Charles at the Kincaid House, they always do a great job of letting us come up there and doing it for free. So, you know, it takes a community to run a school system, and I thank you for your support, and I thank the community for their support. We're not the best, but we strive every day to be the best.
I'll, I'll say that you are the best.
For you?
And I've been sitting on here since 2006, and I think the school system's the best it's ever been, and no discredit to any of the former directors, they've all done a wonderful job. But from my perspective, the school system keeps improving, the grades keep getting better, ACTs keep improving, the graduation rates continue to increase over and over, and I mean, to be able to get into the college at middle school, is that right? Start doing stuff?
They'll be, they'll be doing, they really and truly get into some really careers and stuff like that in middle school, and we're looking at doing some more high school credit in middle school, just like we do college credit in high school.
Oh, I love that. And do you see that happening? I mean, because, I mean, I think, I wish I'd pushed my kids a little more when I was coming up into those areas, and I just, how do we get that message out to the parents?
I think one of the things that this body and the, and the school board did is, is years back, when vocational education was kind of a dirty job, and there was a lot of school systems that did away with their career in technical education. And Anderson County saw that it was the right thing to do, and we held on to ours. And there were some times that people didn't want to do it and all these things, but we, the state built us a new building in 77, and that building, the Career and Technical Center, very few school systems still have those centers. They've done maintenance with them, or they've put something else in them, and we're one of the few systems that kept it. And now it's at the forefront because these welders and these electricians, carpenters, paint and body, all the people that are doing those things, CNA, nursing, we just started a new dental assistance program. And when those students can get hands-on experience, you know, and that's just not for the kids that can't do anything else. CTE usually has our valedictorian, our salutatorian in every class, because they take, they take hands-on, almost 90% of our students take at least one CTE course. So I talked to a young man yesterday, he's a truck driver, and he makes upward of $90,000 a year, and he's home every night. You know, and I said, we may need to have a truck driving school now.
Dr. Parrot, we appreciate the school system and all you do, and the staff, and all those kind of good things. Commissioner McCamey, did you have a motion, or was you just trying to ask a question?
No, that, that...
Leftover?
Leftover from the last motion.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Isbell, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrot, as always, congratulations on all the success that Anderson County Schools have. And I've said this many times, Anderson County Schools, along with Oak Ridge and Clinton, are beacon for the state. How many times have they come here? So this is what works in Anderson County. Now, one of the things that people do is they try to say that we have inferior school systems, when we probably have one of the best, and we have this career in technical, and we put people to work, and they're contributing to the community, and they're paying taxes, and they're buying and living here. What can this body do to help the school system promote into other counties, like say Knox County, that really how good of a school system we actually have? Because I know a lot of times when they're competing to try to get people to move into Knox County, they're saying you don't want to go to Oak Ridge, or you don't want to move into Anderson County because of the school system. But it's quite the contrary. What can we do to help promote that?
Well, I think one of the things right now, we've got a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're working with Jared Fogarty, and Ryan Sutton is our communication person. Anderson County, up until about four or five months ago, we didn't even have anybody that did communication. Everybody tried to do it, but we saw that we had to do that. We had to tell our own story. So we're working with them, we're working with a group of realtors in Anderson County, to really and truly write our story. Because if you go on some of these sites like Zulu and everything, there's a lot of misinformation on there. If some of them, if you go on and however many times you can go on and like something, that's how it makes the school better. And so I really appreciate the Chamber and Mr. Meredith for what he's doing, and we're going to put our own packet out to do that.
I think that Commissioner Meredith has already been working with some local realtors and all that, and I think that was what was in our tourism thing about some of the negatives. But I commend Commissioner Meredith for that.
Yeah, and we've got a, I think there's a lot of things out there we can do. The best thing is word of mouth sometimes, and sometimes, like I say, we forget to tell our own stories. So we're trying to do it, you know... our own stories, so we're trying to do it, you know, this new generation, they like social media and I'm on social media. I've not went to Facebook yet, but I may have to. But when we do, when we do some things like Claxton Elementary School, if you've been on, they, and I'm going to get the word wrong, but they do this thing where their teachers and the principal get on and they read a story at night. And sometimes they have eight or 10,000 people watching that Facebook Live when they read a story at night. So it's a pretty neat thing. So I think that's the thing, is trying to do everybody pulling in the same direction and that's the thing too, is if we've got, there's some things out there we need to work on, but it, we've got a plan and we're trying to work through those and I think the biggest thing is we've just got to stay the course.
And one other thing, we went to a dinner Saturday night and it was about feeding the local kids, you know, and we did that at Main Street Church. And you want to talk about the program?
Well, and I don't know as much about it, I was asked to come. The Main Street got with, they're really a great community partner of Lake City Elementary and Lake City Middle School. And so Brother Wayne saw a need through Mr. Henry Baggett, our principal, and they feed our, any elementary kid or anybody that needs fed in the summer, they feed them from the week after school goes until the week before school starts. They feed them three times a week and they give them enough food. And I don't know, and Brother Wayne, if he's listening, he could text somebody, but he said they needed $10,000. They didn't want to take it out of their budget and they needed $10,000. And I got a text that said they raised over $17,000 for that program.
Good job.
One night. And that's something that the community does and I think that's what we've got in Anderson County, is the community's behind our schools.
Good comments. Commissioner Jaeger.
Thank you. I haven't asked you about enrollment for a while, what, how's it received?
Our enrollment, our enrollment is, we're down about 70 students from the first of the year. It always drops off at this time of year, but our last, our graduating class coming out was a big class and our kindergarten come in is about 400. We've done our kindergarten roundup, but we're down about 80 students this year.
Okay, and one other thing, the middle college, I was speaking with a parent in Oak Ridge and said they were, their daughter was getting their associates one week and the next week graduating high school, which was just astounding. How many middle college do we have?
We have about 18 to 20 per class, so we've got about between 30 and 40. The new class is, I'm not sure about the new class, but our first class, we had about 30, we had a little more than that, but it averages between 20 and 30 a class.
Okay, thanks.
I think last year, we had our students left high school with over 500 college credits.
Wow. Good questions. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Dr. Parrot, I wanted to say thank you very much for your assistance regarding the homebound student and to let people know that if you have a child who goes to any of the schools in Anderson County, that there is a homebound project. And they assign a teacher, the student gets a Chromebook, they're able to go to school from the home and not miss out on anything other than the physical aspects. And Addie really truly appreciates the assistance. She misses school very, very much.
As you know, our motto's "Every Student, Every Day."
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you, Commissioner Isbell, for your comments about the Chamber of Commerce. We are working very closely with our school system as well as Oak Ridge and Clinton City. Just stay tuned, we're going to have a very aggressive marketing campaign, especially on the social media side, to address these issues that's come to our attention, attention with some of our realtor friends, not in this county. So just stay tuned, it'll be a very aggressive move to Anderson County campaign. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Good news to hear that. Commissioner Anderson, sir.
Okay, thanks, and I didn't mean to make a motion, but just a couple of things. With the growth that we've got up in our district around Sinking Springs and Mill Road and everything, are you looking at any kind of near future new elementary schools or anything?
Well, what we're looking at, we're just in the preliminary stages. Right now, we've got some room at Norris Elementary School and about seven, it's been longer than that, probably 15 years ago, we rezone Bus 54. It goes to Andersonville right now and it used to go to Norris, so we're looking to see what the feasibility is about moving that bus back to Norris. We've not done anything, the board just approved me to start a study, there's nothing that'll change this year. But I think that would, that would help, we can, we can handle, Andersonville can handle probably 50 to 75 students, but Norris can handle probably 125 more. So we've got plenty of room in our schools and I think that's the, and the problem is when you, when you do enrollment, it never leaves one school. It just leaves, you know, there's one or two here, one or two there, and when you have 17 schools, you get three students out of it and then there's where you're at.
And also just a great job on your communications. I still see tweets from three years ago when you canceled school that get reshared every time.
I go to, I go from zero to hero when you cancel or don't cancel school.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrot? Thank you again, Dr. Parrot, have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I believe next is the County Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just have a few items that are just approval of resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing the County Mayor to execute a contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation in Anderson County for the purpose of implementing the litter grant program.
We have a motion by Commissioner.
Sorry, I thought I was.
That's all right. Commissioner Meredith and seconded by Commissioner Fritz. Any discussions on the resolution as presented by the mayor? Mayor, do you need a board vote or just a voice vote?
Just approval, yes, just a motion.
Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next is approval of Resolution 1904-744 in support of the Anderson County Complete Count Committee in Planning and Encouraging the U.S. Census 2020 Response Rate in Anderson County. And I was just seeking approval of that and we will present that at a later date at another function.
I have a motion to approve as presented by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
In the last, I don't know if you put this on the consent agenda or not, but I was seeking approval of a proclamation in support of Mental Health Month and that will be presented at a later date.
We did have it on the consent agenda, but I do appreciate you. I know Commissioner Creasy wanted you to have the opportunity to talk about it, but it did pass in the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Thanks again, Mayor. Law Director, sir.
Jay, while you're walking up, I would just like to say thank you for the resolutions you so well wrote today. I know you do, I know, I know, you always say it's no problem, but I just, and I know you mean that too and I don't mean to cut you off, but I really do appreciate it. I know this body does.
Well, I'll tell you this, I get an opportunity to write a lot of resolutions for some wonderful people, wonderful organizations and I'm always a fan of the athletic ones and all that, but those two gentlemen tonight, really are wonderful citizens and that we should all be proud of. They really, there's some people that put this county on the map, big time. I think about Alfred Williams and what he's done for our nation, you look at Hittaway Westcott, I mean, these people are nationally known and just an honor for me to be involved in that.
Thank you.
But I just had, I really have no action items for you tonight. I wanted to let you know that the Toyota case was heard today in the Court of Appeals. We should know something, that's six to eight weeks, we should get an opinion back from them at some point and I've told you this before, Toyota's going to keep coming. So we need to be prepared for that. There's no doubt, they have all the money in the world to stretch this thing out. They show up with a band of lawyers and they've got a firm out of Nashville and they had a specialist that all he does is Court of Appeals and Supreme Court cases and this is just five years, this is up to 2012 now. Well, they've appealed ever subsequent tax law since then. They're not going away. And so we're going to have to, at some point, get some relief at the General Assembly level or something along those lines and they found an opportunity and we start with A in the alphabet, we've had that before. So we have car manufacturing plants and some of those plants produce Toyota parts and they're going to try us as a test case until the bitter end and they'll never give up. So whatever the decision is on these five years, they'll be back for 2013, 2014, 2015 and they'll just keep coming. These are very difficult cases for me because of all the discovery. It really chokes us down and they know that. The other issue I wanted to bring up to you tonight is the Neighborhood Compliance Group that we have for the Williams, the barn at Williams Manor. The Williams attorneys there, this thing is in litigation, there's been a lawsuit filed and then the other parties, the neighbors have cross-claimed and counterclaimed against them and it's getting very nasty. But anyway, the Board of Zoning Appeals issued a special exception for a wedding chapel only and they put some conditions on that. And if those conditions are not met, then the Board of Zoning Appeals could possibly revoke that special exception. As you know, a special exception doesn't run with the land, it's not permanent. So the Board of Zoning Appeals is just looking to see, are they going to violate this or not? And there's several things in there and one of the things that we're looking at, of course, is the noise resolution. That's one area. It looks like all the, they're compliant with all the building laws at first, all the fire marshal codes and things of that nature, which are required. But the noise ordinance, I had a question of this, we talked with Danny Phillips at BZA, he said he does have the noise meters in now. I think he said he had the calibrator in, so that's great and he was going to get some hands-on training, so I think we're ready to go there. We just need to take that knowledge over to the Sheriff's Office so that, that device will be available for the Sheriff's Office if they get calls down there. But last month, you may recall, where we appointed our, we appointed two members, we confirmed the neighborhood group, a gentleman by the name of David Kusak, who I thought would be an excellent representative, he had BZA experience from up north, and Commissioner White, who I thought would be an excellent representative. Well, that group, Mr. Williams and his attorneys have rejected both names. And this is something I didn't quite know, but there was a lawsuit filed against the county several months ago, back in October, and it was dismissed the very next day, non-sued. That lawsuit named the county and for the BZA action, of course, that Commissioner White was the chairman, knew nothing about it. I've been sent a draft of this lawsuit, but knew it was never, it was never filed, never served on myself or the mayor, so we didn't know anything about it, but it was, again, non-sued the very next day. Well, there was all, that case was brought by a group of neighbors down there that also consisted of Mr. Kusak and I think he was kind of shocked when I told him that. So they raised the conflict issue on both Mr. Kusak and Commissioner White. I understand their concerns, it's a bit frustrating since they've never appointed their member to the Neighborhood Compliance Group. But this is my position on this issue, we need to go ahead and fill our spot, we need to comply with our own resolution of this issue because at some point, we may have to revoke that special exception and the first thing they'll do is point fingers, "Hey, you never did comply with it." So Commissioner White has graciously volunteered to go out and seek another volunteer from that area, he knows it well and I know Robert does too in District 5. If you can think of anybody that lives in that area that would be willing to serve on this body, I don't think they'll have to meet much, but just vet some of the complaints that are coming through there and steer them to the appropriate channels, whether it be Marjorie or Danny in Code's Enforcement or whether it's Sheriff's Office or what. We'd like some volunteers from that area, number one, to represent the county and our position on that, that body, and also to represent the neighbors. I've asked the neighbors to start looking. So that's the only things I had for you tonight, I don't need a vote on anything, but I would ask if you have any questions about anything that's going on in the county legally, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have tonight. So just let me know, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Jay. You got a couple of questions. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Jay, when you've got their bankruptcy, Cumulus Media, what's that about?
Cumulus, I don't know if you're aware of them, they own several radio stations across the United States and they filed bankruptcy and of course, we filed a claim for any assets that could be in Anderson County. But I think their personal property that we were taxing at one time has been removed, so, but we're going to go ahead and file a claim, just to secure that claim we already have. So that's what that's about, sir. That's a very large entity, they own hundreds of radio stations, if I'm not mistaken.
They all of a sudden went off the air.
Really? It's sad, they've been around a long time. Any other questions? Anything else I can do for you?
Commissioner, I'm going to jump to Commissioner Creasy, I know he's got a question on that issue. Go ahead, Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, and I was trying to think, the only, is that property they own, is that off, the personal property you're talking about, is that one off of Wood Valley Road?
Sir, I'm not sure. Nicole in my office handles those and I can ask her and she'll know right away where it was at.
Well, I remember, we had, remember, had a tower that was built one time.
Yes, you are correct, you are correct.
And was out of fall zone and I'm thinking that may be the property.
One of theirs. They were a co-locator, if I'm not mistaken, at that point, but.
And then the tower that they have on Cross Mountain is in Cumberland.
Cumberland County. I'll have Nicole check that.
Campbell County.
Campbell County.
Just a few feet, yeah.
I will have her check that and I'll let you know. Any other questions?
Commissioner Isbell, do you have something? I'm going to come back to you.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate how you do that and sometimes you do.
Lose, yeah.
It's hard and.
Oh, no, it's easy.
If we get to keep that, retain that personal property, is that something we could use broadband as perhaps?
We won't be taking possession of the property, it's a bankruptcy, there's an automatic stay that goes into effect that would keep us from taking that property. We can't file delinquent taxes, actions on those, once they're under that automatic stay. So whatever actions are out there, any liens or whatever that could be filed on their property, once they file for bankruptcy, there's that automatic protective stay that goes in place.
Thank you. Good questions. Commissioner McCamey, sorry, sir.
Jay, on the compliance committee that you said you had submitted two names and Mr. Williams and his attorney had rejected those, why did they get the two?
They don't get to choose, but I don't want a conflict issue to come about and them raise, point the finger at us, "Well, hey, you never did." I've been asking them, I think I mentioned this last month, I've been asking them since October to name their person, they never have. But I want us to have our person in line because.
I mean, I can see them continuing to reject anybody that we say and then I.
Absolutely, that's a possibility, but if we can find somebody to represent Anderson County, we're in a much better legal position.
That's what I can tell my people that are calling.
Yes, sir. And make sure you do, let your people that are calling in District 5 know that Danny does have the noise meter, he does, he also purchased the calibrator and he's getting the training, so we'll be ready to go on that end.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. I wanted to give just kind of a brief update, Catherine, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Denneberg, Commissioner McCamey, Commissioner Jaeger and I met over at the Daniel Arthur Building this past week and it was to go through and look at what possibilities there are for additional space or what is it that we have on hand. The Montessori school had three rooms, which are now vacant and they still have goods that have been left behind and were abandoned. And I wanted to request that a motion basically be made that we allow the teachers' supply or the teacher's supply depot to take on any ownership of the goods that have been left behind that they may be able to utilize for the teachers or the school system in Anderson County. But that'd go through Jay's office where he can write a letter saying, "You've left these items behind," et cetera.
I'd be glad to do that for you.
I appreciate it.
If you're not aware of what's happening there, in Montessori, had a lease with us, they had a school there for several years, they suddenly moved out and they left two classrooms full of equipment.
Correct.
Not in the best shape, but there is some serviceable items in there. We sent them a letter, gosh, it's almost, it's been a year ago. And they finally came and got some of their items out of the classrooms, but they've still left some other things. And thanks to the commissioners that went down there and they certainly realized that there is some potential in our school system to utilize some of this equipment. So what I'll do, if you don't mind, is send the Montessori, the former representatives a letter and say, "Look, if you don't get this stuff out, then we're going to go ahead and donate it to our school system and get some use out of it." and donate it to our school system and get some use out of it, if that's okay with this body.
I would appreciate that. Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Oh, it's always great. You will make the motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that our attorney, or law director, I'm sorry, send a letter to the Montessori School system.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion on that motion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. And at the same time, Commissioner Jaeger and I went around and looked at these rooms and went through and got them numbered, because something just didn't seem right. Emory Valley Center has, according to the lease agreement, possession of several rooms. And there's a room that's not on the lease. As far as I'm concerned, they're intruding on space that isn't theirs. Between Emory Valley Center and the United Way, they took it upon themselves to remove some carpeting from this one room. United Way has painted those walls, and they're wanting to use it as a conference room. It's out of their jurisdiction. At the same time, Emory Valley has four additional rooms that they're using that clearly aren't on there as well. We're not being paid for these spaces. They're not locked. When we went to go look at the property and ask who was where, Emory Valley, as an example, said, well, we have four rooms and two offices. And as it turns out, they've got like eight offices, several rooms. They have the room, there's a pool in there that Roger showed us. And it's full of files. Yeah, there's no water. But it's full of boxes of files, and they have just rooms full of stuff. But I wanted to bring Jay in on this as well, to ask him to send them letters, send them letters stating, you know, this is what your lease agreement states. If you need more space, you can rent from us or make a proposal, but in the meantime, get your stuff out, essentially.
Okay, well, give them the option to come back with a proposal to rent that space. Is that one location that you talked about had the carpet pulled up? Is that one of those big classrooms that we're planning on storing things in?
Correct. They have, they've pulled the carpeting up, and neither side would, at first, neither side would say, we were the ones that did it. It was...
Okay. I'll go ahead and send a letter to Naomi Asher with United Way and Jennifer Anderson with EVC.
Okay.
And we'll see exactly if they need extra space. If so, I'll bring amendments back to those leases. I think we're about 18 months into those, if I recall right. But I'll bring those back to you, and we'll take a look at that.
Okay. And I know that the mayor was, is going to talk about the firewalker. The firewalker does take one of those rooms. He sits at a table.
I thought EVC was going to pick up that.
It was very interesting.
Okay. All right. Anything else I can do for anybody?
Commissioner, you done? Commissioner Scott?
Yes, thank you.
No, thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
I was just wondering, has there been any informal conversations with the Emory Valley Center or United Way, you know, asking them, before we jump and send them a letter, I was just wondering whether...
The four of us were, are on this committee, as well as the mayor and Roger. And it was simply to go look at the building to see what space is available or what's being occupied. And Emory Valley employees came to us to say, hi, what are you doing, et cetera. And when we asked if we could see some of these different rooms, they didn't have a problem with it. But it, what bothered me was when they said, well, we just have two offices. And as we went through these rooms, I started counting and said, I think I'm up to eight now. It's where they've just encroached on the space. And it's according to their lease, it's not what they're paying for. They're getting far, much more for the $400 they pay a month.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that, what you observed. I'm just wondering, might be good to touch bases with them, with, you know, explaining you've got a concern.
That's why I'm asking Jay to be involved.
Commissioner Smallridge, I know about these ladies. Ladies are wonderful humans.
Yes.
They're always willing to work with us. And I'll reach out to them by phone first and see where we're at. And I'll be glad to handle that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else I can do for you?
Any other questions for Law Director?
I do appreciate you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So we did cover DARC.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Next is committees and boards. Ethics Committee report.
Page 55.
Page 55. Welcome back, Dr. Parrott.
As chairman of the Ethics Committee, I'm not sure how I got that, but I am chairman. And so, as you know, Ethics Committee had not met. I didn't even know I was on a Ethics Committee, but now I know I'm on one. There was a proposal brought back to update the bylaws, and I guess the bylaws are the procedures, and it is in your minutes. And there was a motion made, and it was passed to bring that before the full commission to accept these revised Code of Conducts for Anderson County. And I so move.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Commissioner Scott. Your motion, Commissioner Scott, or did, no? Commissioner Merritt? Did you have, yes or no?
To accept.
To accept, sorry. Seconded by Commissioner Merritt. Any discussion on the ethics policy as presented? Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess what the committee decided to do, and I hope everyone had a chance to look over in the minutes, we decided, I guess the proper word is to condense the procedure. And Dr. Parrott did a fine job chairing that committee. May be the shortest-lived chairmanship in Anderson County Committee history. But we've kind of condensed it, and we eliminated what we felt, I guess overall as a committee, was unnecessary procedures. I think the point was made by several members of the committee that the state did not require us to be as specific as we had drafted that. To be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is, this new procedure is going to work as efficiently as our committee hoped. I hope and pray that it does. But I would just like to leave it with the commission that we may have to go back and adjust this again, depending on how things work out in the future. It was a pleasure to serve on that committee, as short-lived as it was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vow.
I was trying to request to speak. Oh, it did show me that. Okay.
Commissioner Creasy, you are speaking. You're red. You're speaking.
I got confused that it went to something else. But thank you, IT. But I was at the Ethics Committee meeting, and I didn't particularly like the way it went. As one that worked very hard with the Law Director and the other commissioners years ago to set that committee up, I thought we worked real hard and done a good job to set it up. And then it was revised completely or done away with. And I was disappointed in that. It may be the best for the county, I'm not sure. But I was very disappointed that all the hard work we put in to make sure it went right, we, at least we thought it was at the time we did it. And I was disappointed by that action. But I'll support the motion.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Creasy. Certainly always appreciate your insight. You know, maybe we take a vote on this, and then we can consider moving it to operations to get an extra set of eyes, if this body so chooses. Not my decision. But this motion is just to accept as presented the changes to the ethics policy as presented. Any other discussion? Commissioner Vow, yes, sir?
I'd like to amend the motion that we do send it to operations.
Is that okay with the...
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jameson asked a question of why. Go ahead.
With your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, I agree with it, that it would be a good idea to have operations put another set of eyes on it. Because the Ethics Committee didn't comprise of a lot of commissioners. I think there were just myself and Commissioner Denenberg, and as chairman, I think the chairman was on there, but not all commissioners maybe had input on this. So I think it's a good point, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jameson? I'd like to give Commissioner Jameson a chance to speak.
How many people are on your committee?
About 16.
I think those people have made a good suggestion here as to what we should have as our policy, and I don't see any reason to send it to operations. We'll look at if that's what you want, but I don't, I don't think we can add very much to this or detract from it.
So the motion maker?
I'm fine with letting it go to operations, yes, sir.
The second, you're fine with it? That's, we need to take a vote on, are you making an amendment?
Yes, sir. I mean, we can do it however it's easy. Chairman, I'm going to carry it.
Referral motion? Okay, so...
Making a referral motion, so we need a second to it.
Okay, so you have a referral motion, and do you have a second to your referral motion? Second, Commissioner Jaeger. All in favor of the referral motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Ethics Commission, Committee.
Not done yet, Dr. Parrott.
Dr. Parrott is like, come on, I got to go home.
It's been a long time since 4:30.
Thank you. Have a good evening, Dr. Parrott. He's ready to come back for some more. And, okay. Next is the Intergovernmental Committee report by Commissioner Denenberg, Chairman Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Intergovernmental Committee met. Members present were Tracy Wondell, Shane Vow, excuse me, myself, Tim Isbell, and Denver Wondell, and Bob Smallridge. Mayor Frank and Jay Jaeger were also present. The committee took up, and Commissioner Isbell made a motion to approve Resolution 1904746, requesting the Tennessee Valley Authority to extend the public comment period for an additional 90 days regarding the closure of Bull Run fossil plant. Commissioner Smallridge seconded the motion. Motion passed. I so move.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion by Commissioner Denenberg, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Me.
Unless I've gotten confused, wasn't that, there was a time constraint, that that had to be submitted by that day? And so it was approved by the committee to be signed by the chair of the committee and the chair of the commission, enforred it as such?
Correct.
You are absolutely correct. What I did was two resolutions, one from the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and they passed it. But remember, that's only a committee of county commission that's a recommending body. I'm bringing you back tonight a resolution from the county commission to reaffirm that resolution from the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. So you actually have two resolutions, the one that was passed by the committee, and now this one is passed by the entire county commission. The first one's already been transmitted to TBA.
To meet the deadline.
Yes, sir. It was the eighth.
Thank you, Commissioner Me.
It was the date of the meeting, actually.
Sounds fine to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a, Commissioner Isbell, did you make a motion to accept that? Or is that the first? Have a motion, does anybody second that? Or we already had a motion to second?
She had a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, second. All right, any other discussion on that issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next meeting?
Next meeting will be May 13 at 5:00.
In this room.
In this room. Purchasing is going to give us 30 minutes of their time.
Excellent.
And I hope to have some very intelligent speakers that can talk about water contamination, groundwater.
Thank you, Chairman. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes the report.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Operations Committee report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a good meeting. It was a lengthy meeting. We got a lot of information out from, you know, the people that came to discuss their budget or their business plans, and we really appreciate that. Well, I had a couple of action items. One was motion was made by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, and passed that resolution number 19-04-745, adopted in 2018 International Building Codes Agenda. And then Commissioner Me made a motion to approve the resolution. Commissioner Jaeger is seconding the motion. Motion passed. Afford, full commission for approval.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next action item under new business is for AMR discussion was sent to operations for next month. And then, as a public announcement, James Cox called today to let, to send a personal invitation to all the board members here and to the community, is that the Little Pond Rosa Zoo will be having a community appreciation day on May the 4th with a ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m.
Excellent. So that's Little Pond Rosa, May 4th at 10:00 a.m., Community Appreciation Day.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
May 4th.
May 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does that conclude your report, sir? Appreciate it. Great. I think that is the, we're on to old business. Any old business? Anybody? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that I was at a recent meeting of the Oak Ridge City Council, and they passed a resolution honoring Gary Long for all the help that he, that he gave, you know, in Blankenship Field, putting in new turf. And they were just most complimentary of all his help. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for sharing that. It's always good.
I believe it's Brad from Channel BBB that has done some aerial views and put that on Facebook. It's amazing.
It is.
It looks really sharp.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you realize, but Commissioner Isbell donated a lot of time down there also.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Commissioner Isbell, the one that's from Anderson, Anderson County Schools up there? I mean, he's helping the Wildcats?
He did work plenty, too.
Oh, man, yeah, he did, he did, he did. Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all of this committee. I mean, we do have a great school system.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And thank you for those comments, Commissioner Small. New business? We already moved to one issue. Did you have something?
Yeah.
I'll come back to you.
I don't know whether it's the old business or the new business, but, you know, we approved $115,000 for the Sheriff's Department tonight from our unassigned fund balance. And the justification was to pay for the overages of medical claims for inmates through March. And March is already gone, so they're probably going to come back before the end of June and ask for more. And I feel like, and I brought this up once before, we kind of kicked it around, I don't know what committee to send it to, but I feel like if we could hire a nurse practitioner to work at the jail, and that it could save us money in the long run, and I don't know what committee to send that to, but I would like, I don't know whether to send it to
the HR committee that handles that, or Operations Committee, but I think we need to do something to get a, get a handle on that. They've got medical insurance, and this is just the overage, you know, so...
Commissioner...
Medical staff out there. We've got a medical contractor.
Well, we've got a contractor. I'm talking about a county employee, because contractors are, just like everything else, we talk about outsourcing, they're there to make a profit, and...
They're set rate by contract.
I know, but they're making a profit with that set rate. And I feel like that if we handled it ourselves, that there's, you know, a possibility that we could come up with some savings.
The thing is, you do that contract, you sign the new contract, I want to say, what, February?
Commissioner...
But I'm not talking about canceling the contract we've got, or whatever, whatever that contract goes through, this would go into effect. But I think it's something we need to study, because, you know, it's getting out of hand, the medical cost for inmates. And I see Commissioner Vow is wanting to speak. He probably knows more about it than I do.
You've got a great idea.
But...
He's the expert.
Okay, so I'll, I'll yield to Commissioner Vow.
Commissioner McCamey, I appreciate that. Commissioner Vow is about to come out of his skin over there. So Commissioner Vow, yes, sir?
Exactly. We're here as you can be in the more specific, and I, the way we have two covers for medical. One is the medical contract, where we have southern health partners come into the jail, and they try their best to handle any medical problems we have inside the building, where we don't have to send anybody out. When the medical staff, the nurses or the doctor, the nurse practitioner, that they can contact by phone or video chat or whatever, says, you can't handle that inside the building, send them to the hospital. We have a separate medical code that's managed by Humana that pays for hospital outside doctor services, stuff like that. This is that code, okay? This is issues that even if we had a doctor...
In the building, most likely that doctor would say, we can't handle that in here. Dr. Burrow used to do the same thing. If they can handle it as best they can inside the building, they do. This particular code that we went over on was a result of somebody having been in the hospital for 30 days and missing you, and other issues that are going on that we simply just couldn't handle inside. So I don't know how you would ever fix it to where this wouldn't happen again. We can't tell when someone's gonna have a medical situation that's so severe, we have to send them outside the building. I know, we actually had a heart transplant once. Yeah. You know, that we wound up paying for. Big love.
But there's a new law, and you may be onto something that was, and I sent that to Avery year before last, where the limits on inmate care are at 10 care limits. So do we have it, is somebody auditing those charges to make sure they're at 10 care limits?
We're in the process of doing that. CTAAS also contacted us about that, and we're working with the CTAAS representative, as well as our medical officer at the jail has been contacting 10 care representatives. It got a little more complicated than what we thought it would, but that is something that's in the works.
That might be what, Robert, we need to do, is to somebody to audit those medical claims and make sure we're not paying too much on them. But we're, I'll be glad to work with you on that.
And I know a lot of times we'll get bills from an inmate who had been released, and they went to the hospital after they were released, and the hospital still sends a bill to us. So we have a medical officer who screens all that to make sure we don't pay those bills. And that's how she pays for her own salary every year and them some, but that happens a lot as well.
You guys took on the night, weren't you?
Yeah, that's true, too.
Should we send it to operations, maybe? Just to discuss it further? Commissioner Scott, before...
Well, I was just going to say, yes, Commissioner Vow is correct. Tyler was very, very elaborate on what this whole thing was, and it is. It's the county and state inmates that were billed through Humana, and they were gonna go back and comb them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Smallridge?
Commissioner Vow said just what I heard, and I might add, I think we have to have an officer there if somebody goes to the hospital and they're there for two days, you have to have an officer 24/7? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And one more thing I'd like to add to that. I want to make sure everybody understands, I know the Ray County inmates have been brought up, and yes, we are holding 25 Ray County inmates, 25, and they pay us for that. We pick and choose out of those inmates which ones we want to hold. If they have severe medical problems, we don't hold them. So the funds that we're making on that is more of a profit than the state inmates whom we may get reimbursed from the state, we may not. I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to say something? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Commissioner Smallridge, did you finish your points?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, and I just want to say, what Robert's question was, and he remembers this well, I'm sure, years ago, we had a Jail and Communications Committee. And then later on, we had a committee called the Jail Committee, which Mr. McCamey chaired, and that's when we built the new jail facility. And my point is, do we need to start another, form another committee called the Jail Committee?
Good question. Commissioner Isbell?
Just really quick, one of the things that we've done is we took down the goalpost, the old goalpost at the Blankenship Field, and cut them up into six inch sections, and they're going to have them autographed, you know, by some of the football players, and sold at auction, I think. So, got any Wildcat fans out there that want to do that?
Is there any action this body would like to take on the recommendations? Do you want to send that to operations? Just put it on the agenda, or...
Put it on the agenda for operations.
You've got a motion, second on that?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.